Let's call this meeting of the Carver Schools Committee to order on September 10th, 2020 at 6:31. Art, you're the chairman of the Board of Health. Do you want to open up your committee meeting?
Yes, I'll call the meeting of the Board of Health to order for on September 10th. Members present Barry Callis is here, Eric Buehler is here, our agent Kevin Forg is here, and I'm the chairman Art Ward.
Can I introduce the members of the school committee or have them introduce themselves?
Why don't we have them introduce themselves? Let me start with Jen.
Good evening, Jennifer Pratt, School Committee member.
Jason Greenwood.
Stephanie Flaherty.
Ames O'Brien.
All right, thank you, everybody.
I'm Scott Dave Superintendent of Carver Public Schools.
Okay, so now would you all stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Can I get my flag up?
Are you a flag? Okay.
Wait a second. Hi, there we go.
Hat off. All right. All right, the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Art. Go ahead, Eddie.
Oh, no, no. Wait, we're going to start with a joint meeting with the Carver Board of Health, and we're going to start first on metrics on transitions between plans and models.
And I just wanted to stop by saying I'd like to thank the members of the Board of Health for joining us this evening. It's important that we're all going to work together in terms of reopening school and really sending a message to the community that the two boards are going to work together as we address any issues that come related to COVID-19 and the school system, and that we want to work hand to hand with the Board of Health in terms of addressing some of those issues. So we appreciate you taking the time and joining us in a joint meeting this evening.
All right, very well said. Scott, do you want to go down and open up on this topic? Or have Kevin?
No, I, so, you know, I'm going to ask Kevin to talk a little bit about the weekly report. Because, and just for the background for the Board of Health, I think they're aware of this, but and for everyone who's here, is the Department DSE and Department of Public Health has actually asked school districts to look at this weekly report in terms of COVID-19 and the coloring system of red, yellow, green, or gray or white, and kind of use that as a determinant as one of the factors that they would take into account when transitioning between different models, whether it's a remote model for schools or a hybrid model or a full in-person model. So we were just asking, I'm going to ask Kevin a little bit, I'm going to pull it up, Kevin, if that's okay with you, and then maybe if you can talk a little about Carver and the number of cases we've had in Carver and the information on this document. That would be great if you're comfortable doing that. I'll pull the document up. So Kevin, I'll turn it to you a little bit if you want to talk about.
Is Kevin unmuted?
I believe Kevin's still muted. I can see his lips moving, but we don't hear him.
I can't see his picture.
I can't see his picture either. Wait a second.
How's that?
There you go.
There you go, Kevin. Very good. Now, now we can hear you.
All right, so the map that you're speaking to is what's called the average daily incidence rate per thousand, per 100,000 over the last two weeks. And up until this week, Carver was still a gray town, which meant that it had less than five reported cases. To me, it's still a little confusing in the sense that we went from white to yellow. And a yellow is if you have four to eight cases per 100,000. But as I read the title of the map, they talk about an average daily incident rate. So it seems like they're probably being very cautious in terms of how they go from gray to green to yellow and red. But we certainly have no control over that. They have probably formulas that they use in order to determine how to get from one color to the other. So I believe, well, obviously, the reason for that is because we had, within the last two weeks, six new cases. But it should be emphasized that four of those six cases were within one household. So, you know, this is something that could easily go back to gray within the next couple of weeks, or if things trend toward an uptick, they could certainly go to red. So basically, that's the very quick explanation as to what that is.
So the other things I'm showing, I'm just looking at Carver specifically here in terms of the percentage of positivity, and that's just a straight ratio based on the number of tests for 14 days. So here they're saying, you know, Carver had 404 tests. They're reporting seven positive tests in the last 14 days for a percentage positivity of 1.73. And I know at times there's been some discrepancy between what you have or the Board of Health has as a number as compared to what's in this report. And I don't know, you know, we talked about that a little bit, but I don't know if you can speak to that at all, why? And maybe we don't know why there's a discrepancy sometimes between the.
Yeah, I guess I can. I don't know if it's going to clear anything up, but I received two responses, one from the VNA. And if you bear with me, I'll just read what her response was. And my specific question was, why is there a difference between the two reporting agencies? One being the VNA and the DPH. So the response from the VNA was, yes, we get that question a lot, and there's no real solid answer, unfortunately. The state report is a little misleading as well. It will not report a specific number if it is between one and five, but it's not zero either, so it's confusing. So that's the VNA response, okay? The response from the DPH, which I received today, again, bear with me. This question has come up now a number of times. What happens is that the weekly count that is released by the state on Wednesday is based on the case count at the moment in time that the data is taken off the system. It literally changes on a moment's notice. Differences might be caused by reporting delays from various parts of the system or just changes that occur between when it was pulled and when your nurse looked at the count. So I hope that clears it up for everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, there is no answer, but I have to stress that when you look at the difference in the numbers, the numbers may vary here and there, you know, one, two, three. But generally speaking, the magnitude of the numbers, which I think is more important, remain pretty consistent.
Any other thoughts about this report, Kevin?
The one that you have up?
Yeah.
No, you know, I tried to do just a simple ratio of seven cases over the last, I'm sorry, six cases over the last week or so to a town the size of Carver, which is roughly 11,000. And a simple ratio doesn't even get as close to that number of cases per day. So I don't know what their formula is.
And ultimately, the goal here is, and the Department of Education and the Mass Department of Public Health, as they've talked to schools, it says, kind of what you said in terms of, we just need to look at the trend. You know, and look at the, you know, look at the week on, look at the trends on a bi-weekly basis. Is the count case, is the case, number of positive cases going up significantly? Is the percentage of positivity going up significantly, or vice versa? Is it going down significantly in either direction? Or if you're in a good position, are you staying relatively flat? And they're just looking at that data over time and trying to inform and make decisions about what model the school is in. So obviously, we've had a change this week from gray to yellow. And obviously, the school committee will have to take that into account as we move forward and make decisions. I don't know if the members of the committee have any specific questions for Kevin on the report.
I have a question for Kevin, or anyone else on the Board of Health that might be able to answer this. Kevin, what's the procedure for our VNA for getting numbers? What procedure are they operating under that the state is differing from?
I honestly don't think it's any different. The VNA works under a system known as MAVEN. And the MAVEN is, MAVEN is an acronym for Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiological Network.
Okay.
So it's a system, I don't understand it, which is why I have the VNA doing the work for the Board of Health. I believe that the state is probably working on the same or a similar system. But again, I stress that the trends are relatively the same, not relatively, they are the same in all accounts.
Jen, Jen raises her hand.
Jen?
Thank you. Sorry it took me a minute to find my unmute. I have a question. It was my understanding that our contract with the VNA had ended, and they were continuing to stay on until we signed a new contract. Have we signed a new contract with the VNA or found an alternate provider to report numbers for us?
The VNA is with us doing that contact tracing until the end of this month. At that point, I have, I'm making arrangements to have the CTC, which is the, it's the Contact Tracing Collaborative. And very simply, we just need to register with them. And that is currently in place to be done. Now, that being said, for the time going forward, and I don't think it'll change once the CTC becomes involved, there is going to be a strong relationship and bond that develops between the contact tracing team, whether it be the VNA or the CTC, myself and the school nurses, to work together in a partnership to make sure that whatever tracing, whatever tracing needs to be done. I spoke with Meg Payne today from the VNA, and, you know, she basically, she basically stated that there is a definite need to have the work of the school to help in their tracing. So as things develop in the school, whether it be someone is known to be ill or positive, that some, there's going to be a lot of back and forth between the three agencies, the school, Board of Health, and the CTC or the VNA. But there is going to be some continuity in that contact tracing. It's absolutely necessary.
Jen, is that all? Okay, for the audience members, I want to let you know, and I probably should have said this earlier, please don't unmute yourself and chime in for questions on this. This is a regular committee meeting. We're going to have a comment and question portion after this presentation is over that you can ask questions on. Anybody else in the committee have?
Questions on the report? Sorry about that. Meant to go back to the agenda. So then, and Kevin, you actually started to talk about this a little bit. It was just more that, the second agenda, I mean, I was just talking about that process of contact tracing and how that works and how that's going to operate, and any questions that members of the committee might have in terms of that, and ultimately, you and I have spoken about this a few times, you know, that, you know, we're going to work effectively together in contact tracing and any issues COVID-related in the school setting. And, you know, I can even talk a little bit about our most recent positives that we've had in the school setting and how contact tracing has worked. But I don't know if there's any pieces you want to add on to what you just said in terms of working with the VNA, working with the CTC in terms of contact tracing. You may have covered that agenda item.
Kevin, you have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. So what I wanted to add is that when a person is tested as positive, that's when the contact tracing team gets involved. What they'll do is they will interview the positive person. They will try to extract from that person, you know, who he's been with, when he was there. They generally, what they'll do is they'll go back 48 hours from the time that he first, he or she exhibited any symptoms. And from that point forward, try to get an idea of who he had been in contact with. From that point, they will then contact those persons based upon the interview that they feel may be considered to be a potential contact. They will then contact that person, and they'll present them with the things that they need to do, what they need to do in terms of quarantining, how to quarantine, and so on. Scott, I believe you went through that process because of your your interaction with somebody else. I mean, I'm pretty sure that that's pretty much how that process went.
Yeah, so I will, I mean, addressing what's happened in the school, and this is on our agenda separately as well, but I can address it here, is that we did have two employees that tested positive, and the contact tracing was done really well, really effective. They responded to those employees very quickly. They took them, they went through that interview process of establishing who the close contacts were. And then, you know, they worked with the school system in terms of identifying close contacts. So from my perspective, and I think the community knows that I was identified, so I self-identified that I was identified as a close contact. I do want to let the community know that I actually was tested, and my test came back negative, and I'm still have no symptoms, so that is great. So I, you know, I have a negative test, and I'm doing fine, but I'm still quarantining because you're still required to quarantine for 14 days, even if you have a negative test, because your symptoms could develop later on. And, but, so I've had some personal experience with the group. Now, it happened that we were actually working with the CTC. We worked with the Mass COVID team and not specifically with the VNA in this situation. And they are, they actually follow up, and they call all of the people every two days. So I've been getting a phone call every two days. And actually, they provide a lot of support. I think it's good for the community to know that they provide a lot of supports beyond just the contact tracing. You know, so they, as someone in quarantine, they've offered me support in terms of, do I need assistance with food? What can they do to help me? Do I, if, do I need assistance in getting a test? Which I, and I didn't need assistance in any of these things, but they were always offering those supports. And I know, you know, speaking to the two employees who tested positive, they have actually found the group to be very supportive in regular contact. And, and, so so far, actually, I've been impressed with the contact tracing process as it has happened in this situation. You know, it makes me feel, it makes me believe that that, you know, if there are future instances, which we hope there aren't, that it will be, the process will be as effective as it has been through the experience we've had with the two employees testing positive.
Reinformative.
Yes, I don't know if there's any specific questions to the members of the Board of Health or to the, to Kevin, or about contact tracing, or any other topics?
Any of our members have any other questions on these? Seeing none. I have one question. If you can answer it, that'd be great. If not, it's no big deal. I'm just curious, how the numbers of people that contract COVID in nursing homes affect our numbers? Though they might be in a nursing home in another town, but they were originally from Carver. Are you seeing that at all weighing into the number?
I'm not sure how they handle that. I would assume that if they were in a nursing home in another town, it would show up in that town's database, not in the previous town.
One of the things we talked about was just a theory that because their permanent residence was here, but they got moved to a nursing home in another town, they might still count it for Carver. But that's why I was asking. I didn't know if that was true or not.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so if no one else has anything else, or anybody else in the Board of Health has, anybody else on the Board of Health want to say anything? I know Art was very helpful with me when this whole thing first started. We were talking about the playgrounds and what could be touched or what not could be touched, and, you know, kind of dealing with the statistics that came out like day by day, as well as Mr. Neef and everybody. So I just want to thank Art and the Board of Health again for being so receptive to all of our concerns. So Scott, do you want to announce a certain procedure for asking questions?
Jen has raised her hand.
Oh, Jen, okay. I don't see you. Okay, Jen.
Thanks. I just wanted to, first of all, just say thank you to Art Ward. He's been so good about posting updates on Facebook. Can I just get a confirmation of how many current cases we have active in Carver that you guys are with today? Are we still at six?
The last report that I had was six, yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you. Art's been doing an amazing job at keeping the public notified by sharing on the Carver Facebook pages every time there's a new case. And so many people are very grateful for that communication. So thank you for that.
I agree.
Just trying to keep everybody updated, that's all.
That's a good thing. Scott, do you have a, do you want to announce?
So I meant to say at the beginning of the meeting, so if you are interested, so this is going to be our comments for the general public period for actually both meetings, for the school committee meeting and for the joint meeting of the Board of Health. So if you're interested in public comment, in the chat, you can chat Meredith Erickson, who is the co-host of the meeting. So if anybody was interested in making a public comment at this time, and again, we'll just, we just want to be clear that this is the public comment period for the joint meeting and also for the school committee meeting.
Now, this might take a few minutes for people to get into the chat function of this. That's fine.
Jen, did you raise your hand again? I'm sorry?
I did. I have received a question that I've been asked to ask on behalf of somebody. Are we planning to set any specific metrics tonight that would cause us to move between plans? Obviously, if Carver goes red, we have to be in a full remote. But aside from that, are we planning to set any other metrics for moving between models tonight?
That is not, it's not on the agenda to specifically establish a metric of when you transition from one model to a next. I know we've talked about that. We, you know, on our agenda, we do have a discussion of what's recently happened within the school district and within the community, and whether we would consider not starting in a hybrid model and consider opening in a remote model based on the most recent information. But I don't, there's not an intention this evening to set a timeframe and transition based on the metrics. The goal was to kind of gain some more information on the plan, maybe look at some of the, and get some information and get the Board of Health's perspective on this kind of bi-weekly report that we're supposed to be using to look at possibly transitioning.
All right. Is Meredith on?
I am, yes. And we have so far one request for public comment from Leanne Smith for Redtail Lane, Carver, Massachusetts. Leanne, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. So I'm a parent of two children from the elementary school. I'm actually a dental team leader and a general dentist. I work for a community health center in Plymouth. We do have five community health centers, and I'm just disclosing that information because I'm extremely familiar with the map that you showed. And it's funny that even Carver is considering like a trend to increase the cases because that's not what we have been seeing at the clinic and discussing daily. My immediate supervisor actually works for the DPH. And yesterday, we had the meeting of how our trend is to maintaining low risk in Plymouth County, including Carver, which is a community that we have, and actually is even is up some of the guidelines and protocols that we have to continue safely seeing all the patients. So as far as I know, and I'm familiar, and that's like some guidelines that is coming, as I said, from my immediate supervisor that works for the DPH. The trend is not going up, is actually maintaining very stable. I looked at the map today. I saw the map that Kevin posted. It was actually from last week of August to September 5th. I pay attention to the date, and I know we are on the green. I'm not saying specifically for Carver, but I do not see a trend of the cases going up, even for like the healthy safety and protocols for our clinics. I agree that if you go red, we have to change everything, but that's not what I see. And I was just considering too, like, if the two cases of the staff members in Carver doesn't seem to reflect what is going on in the community. And as a parent, as a healthcare worker, as a Brazilian person, I really want to ask you to continue and keep in mind that the hybrid is an essential option for all of those people that chose hybrid, especially if the cases, as I said, doesn't, to me, being in the situation that I am and working as a healthcare provider, doesn't seem to go trending up at all. As I said, even with the meeting that we had, I have been reached out by some Brazilian parents with all the concerns that when they don't speak English, how they can teach the kids. You know, as I said, like, a person that is not available at home, us that have liked to be available for the parents or parents that work from home are not available. And I feel that this is the time to at least try the hybrid. We don't know what's going to go, know in the future, but at least it would be our chance to try. As have been said in the past, we have been given the options for everybody that is really concerned to have the option to choose to go remote. But the parents that chose to go hybrid, there is a reason for that. And it's extremely difficult, even like, not only the social, economic, or it's extremely even hard to find daycare within a week notice right now. And if the only reason that we're basing is on the, maybe the case is trending up, it's just like not reality, because, as I said, with the meetings that I'm having, the cases are not trending up, just because even like Kevin mentioned, four cases in one household. I don't know, there's just like my point of view. And I just want to make sure that I had the chance to make that comment, and I appreciate that chance too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leanne. Meredith, do we have anybody else?
Yeah, we have a few. The next one is Andrea Piccarelli from Two Davis Lane in Wareham.
Hi, my child is school choice at Wareham Middle, excuse me, at Carver Middle High School, which is why I'm from out of town. My child has to stay fully remote. He has a medical condition that prevents him from being in the classroom at this point, given the decision to have high school kids switch classes. If he had stayed in one classroom for the day, his doctor would have supported it. And so I asked the question on the remote information meeting for parents just before this, that if the school committee were to vote to go fully remote, then would those students who opted to go fully remote and are going to be on the Ingenuity platform, would they then be assigned to remote live classes with their peers at that point? And the answer was no. And I think that's a big disadvantage to them. And so if the school committee does make that decision, I would ask that you consider that at that point, should we be integrating those children who are staying remote because of other reasons at this point, and let them have the same experience as their peers?
All right. Thank you, Andrea. Does anybody want to, Scott or Meredith, you want to have a response for that, or?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Because I think it depends on, the response would be different depending on the decision the school committee makes later on. So I, I will address that issue later, but not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next, yeah, thank you. Our next is Shannon Altimers from 20 Great Meadow Drive.
Hey Shannon, you gonna mute yourself?
Hello. My question is, based on those six positive tests, are those actual tests that were taken and positive versus the probable cases?
I think I have to throw it to Kevin on that.
I wasn't sure.
You're saying, yeah, were those, were the six positives, I do know those are all positive tests, or is there any presumptive positive?
They are all positive.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon. Meredith?
Vicky Paquette from 44 Bow Street.
I, I just, I don't know if you can answer this. I was just wondering if those two people that just tested positive, how they're doing? If they had to be hospitalized, if they're okay?
I was going to address that under our, under the school committee agenda, there's a section on update on COVID-19 situation. I mean, I, Andy, I defer to you as the chair. I can respond to that now, or I will cover that as part of our update on the COVID-19 situation. You know, there's a lot, there's more information I'm going to provide there than just the current health status of those people, but I can, can do it all right now.
Either way, it's fine with me, but if you have more to come with that same information, then why don't we just leave it till a little further in the meeting?
Can I make, can I make a suggestion, Andy?
Sure.
James O'Brien, not knowing how many questions there are going to be, I, I think it's better that we defer to the agenda if we can, and not make this a question and answer, but this is more of a public comment time. And I think every question that anybody has should be answered. Just this moment in this place might not be the time to do all of that.
All right, noted.
Yes, I, I will address that on the agenda item under update on COVID-19 situation.
Okay, good. All right, Meredith.
Next, we have Stacy Pyers from 49 Wenham Road.
Hi. I want to start by saying that I don't usually speak at these types of meetings, but I, when I seen that there may be a revote or discussion on if students will return hybrid or not, I felt really strongly that I should speak today. I'm an ICU nurse, and I've seen firsthand the effects that COVID can have. However, with that being said, I fully support an opening of the schools. How long are our children going to be giving, how long are we going to be giving our children less than what they deserve when it comes to an educational standpoint? COVID is not going away anytime soon. Some may be hopeful for an effective vaccine, but are we really going to depend on that? There are so many that are already opposed to vaccines that have been out for decades. Now add the fact that this is brand new and created in a fraction of the time that was designated safe by the FDA just a year ago. I'm not anti-vaccine, I'm pro-vaccine, and I work in healthcare where I have an increased risk of exposure. However, even I'm debating on whether I'll take this vaccine, and if I'll allow my daughter to take this. A vaccine is not the answer to when we can safely open schools, so what is? There is not an end closely in sight. Everything else is open. People, teachers, children, and parents take risks every day when they go to the stores, beaches, parks, malls, restaurants, et cetera, which we all know has been happening. We as a community have to measure the benefits to see if they outweigh the risk. The risk in the Carver community is fairly low. There are six, four within one house, cases in the whole town over the last weeks, which they had already stated is a little over 11,000 people. That's not a lot of, a large percentage of people that are affected. Now take the risk that measure, and how many will get very sick from the effects of COVID. It cuts it down even more. Everyone seems to have a choice. Parents can choose to keep their kids home. Teachers can choose to pursue other opportunities if they feel the risk is too much for them. At the end of the day, nobody signed up for this, but everyone has a choice. It may not be their first choice, but that doesn't take away the fact that the choice is still there for them to make. Please don't take away parents' choices to be able to give their kids their right to a more effective education. The children will be six feet apart in hybrid mode with increased precautions. This is no different than the summer camps, daycares, and other programs that have been open through the summer. No different than all the programs that are opening to give parents a place for their kids to go to do remote work while they, remote learning while they work. This is the new normal for now. Our schools need to open with increased safety precautions in place. We need to move forward, and we need to persevere as a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stacy.
I saw that Jen raised her hand. I don't know if that she just had to put her hand down from before, so I just wanted to recognize that she had raised. She put her hand down. Okay.
We got a hungry lady. Did you wash your hands? Soap and water?
Hold on a second, I'm going to mute everybody. Okay.
I had the Zoom call like on the car, and then I pulled up and it was like, I thought it was going to cancel it, so I.
I'm trying, I'm trying to mute everybody, it's not working.
No, I can't get it.
There we go. Okay, Meredith.
Next, we have Leah Allegrini, 113 South Meadow Road.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, Leah. Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I'm a bit confused and disappointed that when I read the agenda, I thought that the discussion was going to be between the committee and the Board of Health about how and when you would establish trends and establishing guidelines for if we did need to make a move between models. You know, Desi kind of left it out there that any decisions or extenuating circumstances in the trends would be made in conjunction with the Board of Health. So I think it's important for parents, every parent, but working parents, that we have an idea of, you know, are we looking at two, three, four weeks of a trend in a certain direction? And then you guys will revote, because it takes a lot to transition a schedule or even the kid's mindset between going to school and not going to school. And I really think in fairness to parents, teachers, the kids, that we should have some guidelines in place for how long of a trend is it, is enough to say, you know, we need to go remote? How long of a trend is it to say that, you know, we should try to phase back into being in school full-time? And reading the agenda tonight, I thought that was what was being discussed. So I would like to know when you're planning, if you're planning to do that.
I know it's something we've spoken, we've spoken about several times. I mean, I think it's something we're all looking forward to doing, and the state guidance is just that guidance. But it's something we haven't focused on specifically right now, and it is something that needs to be done. Scott, do you want to speak a little more on that?
I mean, we could certainly set it as an agenda item for a future meeting, if the committee would like us to do that, in terms of establishing timelines and transition trends. You know, there's a lot of complicating factors there. And, you know, one of the complicating factors becomes the whole guidance of six feet versus three feet. You know, so the basis of the decision on the hybrid model was based on the, the concept of the six feet of social distancing. Because we've said in a full in-person model, we can't meet that standard. And so I think that's another factor that has to be taken into account is when everyone's going to be comfortable to say that we're willing to not meet the standard and then live by the three-foot standard versus the six-foot standard. That would be a huge impact in terms of being able to transition from a, a hybrid model to a full in-person model. It's definitely a discussion we should have, and I'm all for putting on the agenda and setting some timelines. But I also think we need to be successful in a model for a period of time before we make that transition as well. And I guess maybe I still agree that's what you're looking for, is just some timelines and some goals of when we make that transition. And that would be fair to put on an agenda in the future.
I know some, I know we talked about, we kind of rejected the idea of actual calendar dates to look at things, you know, but just to see what, what the data is on the ground and what's going on in the community, that was more realistic. But yeah, it's definitely something we, we should get on to. Thank you, Leah. Meredith, how many more do we have? Does it, do you have a count?
No more.
No more, that's it. Okay. Okay, then. Thank you, everybody that commented. I appreciate it, and we'll definitely take that into consideration. So moving on.
Well, start, I don't know if the board, if you want to.
That's right. Yes. So, yeah, so Art, the Board of Health portion of our meeting is over. If you'd like to adjourn your meeting, we, we're going to stay in the meeting with us. And you guys are free to stay in the meeting, or you can, you can leave. It's up to you.
I don't know if this.
Go ahead, Scott.
I was just saying, I don't know if there's any other thoughts from the Board of Health as well.
Do you want to, Art, do you want to say something to the public, or?
Well, you know, most of, most of what we've been involved with has been Kevin working with Scott and the school department. And we fully support everything that they've been doing. He's, he's the, you know, hands-on guy every day for us. Three of us not necessarily in town all the time to be involved with all these meetings. Kevin, that's to keep us up to date.
Hey, I would say Kevin, Kevin and I have a good working relationship, and we've been in regular communication.
That's great. I have one more question before you guys go, which I meant to ask earlier. Kevin, maybe you could shed some light on this. With the contract ending with the VC, VNA, at the end of the month, you said we have the contract, the, the mass COVID tracing team that's going to, you know, back us up with that. But what are the, what are the, what's the prospects of getting signed on to another, another agency for a nurse, a nurse position?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Oh yeah, we contract out with the, with the Cape Cod VNA now, correct?
Right, right.
Is there, is there a replacement in the works for them?
Yeah, there's also, I'm also working with a group of nurses that coincidentally were part of a team that were in the COVID hotels. And as a group, they, they recognized the need, the Cape Cod VNA is, is, is moving their side of the canal. And they have left towns like Carver and Halifax and Plimpton, basically to find a replacement. So for that end, I was able to make some contact with these nurses. They're basically setting up a, a business, if you will. And I met with, I met with one of them two weeks ago. And they are capable and willing and ready to perform all the services that the VNA did, including the Maven and contact tracing. And when I say everything that the VNA had done for us in the past, and I, and I have to add, they provided those services extremely well. I can't say enough about them. Anytime I had a question, anytime I, I sent an email, I mean, it was almost an immediate response. So that being said, the VNA had provided things like flu wellness seminars, things like fall prevention and things like that. So that is also in the works. And as a matter of fact, today, I asked the, my contact person with that group to send me a contract so that I could review it myself and with the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else on the Board of Health have something to say before to the community, before we, you guys adjourn?
Andy, this is Barry. Yes, hi, everyone. This is Barry Kells. I appreciated hearing residents speak during the public comment. And I just want to acknowledge the last individual who I think made a really good suggestion around preparedness, and would be glad to meet again with the committee to talk about metrics and how to communicate that, well, decide that and communicate that, should there need to be a change in model.
All right. Thank you, Barry. Yeah, we look forward to working with you guys, you know, you and Kevin closely on the two committees together, and keeping up to date on everything. All right, so if there's no, nothing else, Art, if you guys want to adjourn your meeting, and you, you're free to stay if you want, but if you want to adjourn your official meeting.
Well, I want to take a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
Motion seconded.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Well, actually, this is a, this is actually a Zoom meeting, so I think you guys have to do a roll call vote, per the state.
Barry?
Here, aye.
Eric?
Here, aye.
Now, the chairman, I'll vote aye.
There you go.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it.
Okay.
Good thing.
All right, so moving on with our school committee meeting, we are going to go to new teacher introductions.
Yep. So Mr. Schultz and Mrs. Myastis are going to join us, and they're going to introduce the new staff in each of their buildings. I guess I'll, Mr. Schultz, go first. He has a little bit of a, a longer list.
Okay. Mike, you there?
I'm clicking all these buttons to get live here. Thank you. Welcome every, welcome everyone. Thank you. So I just wrote up a brief, a statement about each person, so I'll just go through the list. I did add a couple to this list. Scott, as things are always changing, as you know. But we'll start with Dave Aruda, our new technology teacher. This was a position that we literally filled about a week ago. Dave is, Dave earned his Bachelor of Science from Wentworth Institute of Technology in electromechanical engineering, and went on to study mechanical engineering and physics in graduate school at MIT. At MIT, discovered his passion for teaching. Since then, Dave has spent the majority of his teaching career serving as the AP physics teacher and a robotics advisor at Silver Lake Regional High School. And David is excited to join the Pathways Program at Carver Middle High School and take this unique opportunity to build an engineering tech program from scratch in a community that clearly values and supports the current technology education of their students. So we actually asked the teachers to give us a little blurb, and then we added some stuff to it. So we welcome Dave Aruda. I think some of these new teachers are here. So welcome, Dave. Another position we just filled within the last two weeks, this is a tough one to pronounce. So Karen, I'm still working on this, Karen Batia Galuppi. She's a Spanish, new Spanish teacher for us. Karen lives on Cape Cod, but grew up in Lancaster County, Pennsylvania. So the mix of farmland and suburban neighborhoods in the Carver community feels familiar to her. Karen likes to travel. Spain and Ireland have been her favorite places visited so far. Karen has been teaching Spanish for more than 28 years in a variety of educational settings, college level, as well as private charter and public secondary schools, and she is delighted to be starting her new role at Carver Middle High School. Welcome, Karen. Jerry Ford. Jerry is a new high school math teacher for us. Jerry recently made the transition to, to a teaching career after nearly 25 years in the financial service industry. He has worked at Hingham High School as a paraprofessional in the math department, and last year worked at Ducksbury Middle High School as a line term substitute in a ninth grade geometry class and an eighth grade algebra class. This is his first year as a full-time lead teacher, and he's looking forward to teaching math as well as bringing some business world insights and tips to help prepare students for college. Welcome, Jerry. Next is Zachary LeBlanc, which is a transfer from the elementary school. Zach will be doing our Delta program, working with our Delta program at the middle high school. Zach LeBlanc lives in Dartmouth with his wife and two dogs. This is his second year in Carver, as he was the fourth grade moderate special education teacher last year. What brought Zach to the Mills High School was the opening in the Sevier Special Education Program. A lot of Zach's experience has been with Sevier Special Education population, and when the opportunity was presented, Zach, he knew it was the right fit. Welcome Zach to our program, just a shit from the elementary school. Another new math teacher in eighth grade, Craig Loceato. Craig is a graduate of Providence College and has spent the last six years teaching middle school math at Sacred Heart in Kingston. Craig has been blown away with how welcoming and close-knit the Carver community has been, and he's very excited to start here at the middle high school. Welcome, Craig. Julia Whalen. Julia has, will be our new eighth grade science teacher. Julia recently graduated from Bridgewater State University with degrees in both secondary education and biological sciences. Julia completed her student teaching practicum at Taunton High School last fall, and has worked as a long-term biologist. and has worked as a long-term biology substitute at Middleboro High School this past spring. She's very excited to bring her enthusiasm and creativity to Carmel High School's science department this year. And then I just have two more that were not on the list. Jeanette Sabelli. Jeanette has assumed a long-term subposition for high school guidance. And Jeanette is a recent graduate from Harvard University School of Education. She did her undergraduate studies at Quinnipiac College, and she did her internship at Charles E. Brown Middle School in Newton in Prospect Hill Academy in Cambridge. She's jumped right into working with the guidance team as they've been really busy with scheduling and last-minute adjustments to our programs. Welcome, Jeanette. And then finally, Jess Foley. Jess Foley is, was hired as our second nurse at the middle high school. Jess received her nursing degree from Curry College and has worked as a school nurse in the Silver Lake School Districts, as well as currently a nurse at the Good Samaritan Medical Center in Brockton. She brings a ton of COVID experience to our team and has been working, another busy group that's been working diligently to put together the new protocols for the, for the district. So welcome, Jess. And the last thing I will say is, the interview process for me is always exciting. It's always an opportunity, it's great to get an opportunity to meet people and see how they fit with your, with your community. And I think this is a fantastic group of people that we've assembled for this year. So I'm excited for this year and for this group. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Schultz. And welcome, everybody. We're happy to have you on staff. Thank you.
And then Mrs. Myastis from the elementary school.
Good evening, everyone. I have one person to welcome and to introduce, and her name is Caroline Nichols. Caroline is a graduate of Stonehill College. She has her bachelor's, bachelor's degree in elementary education with a minor in sociology. Caroline comes to us, she's going to be teaching first grade. She has a very diverse background. She has worked with specialized education programs to support students who have special needs, both at the elementary and the middle school level. She's been involved with mentoring for change. It's a program, a wellness program in Stoughton. She also has worked with children in before and after-school programs, primarily focused on fitness in a fitness enrichment program. She has conducted her student teaching in Stoughton and Canton, and she is very excited to join us in first grade. She has a wealth of knowledge, and she also has been helping many of us with some of our technology needs already. So welcome, Caroline. We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much, Ruby. Welcome, Caroline. All right. Are we going to move on to resignations?
I'll look at comments. That was our introduction of our.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comments from the APC.
Sorry about that. I was a little ahead of myself. Sorry. Comments in the EAPC.
Hey, good evening, everyone. For you, those who don't know me, I'm Tom Pinto. I'm the president of the Education Association of Plymouth and Carver. The EAPC has real concerns regarding the health and safety of our students, staff, and community, especially with the uptick in the positive coronavirus tests. This is critical information when the board is making the decision on whether it is truly safe to start the school year in a hybrid model. The safety of your community, your priority in your upcoming discussion and decision. I'll now turn it over to Tammy Johnson, Carver Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Yep, Tammy Johnson, Carver EAPC Vice President. I'd like to start out with an acknowledgement of the incredible hard work and flexibility of our administration and educators across our school community. Clearly, change is inevitable, but in these days even more so. We still have so much more to do. Everything is being reinvented. Everything is new. We're learning a new program, Aspen, for attendance and grading. We're learning a new schedule. We're learning three different models that we, we need to be ready to transfer in at any moment. We've gotten new laptops, which is awesome, and we're very thankful. We have hallway protocols. We have cafeteria protocols, bathroom protocols. We're delivering lessons in very different ways. We are assessing in different ways. We are going through very different health and safety training like we've never done before. We are undergoing a great transformation that needs, that we need to be ready in a change, on a change on a dime. We have discussed these different models all through the summer, and all of us have worked so tirelessly trying to fulfill the goal. We have the goals that's on our reopening plan. I'd like to just go over them very quickly from the Carver Public Schools' principles and priorities. Number one is make the health and safety and well-being of our school community a top priority. Number two, take into account the needs of all stakeholders, students, families, and staff. Number three, ensure that the plans are sustainable and take into account the mental, physical, social, and emotional needs of the school community. Number four, build on our core values. Number five, incorporate reflections and lessons learned during the period of school closure. Six, allow for flexibility and fluidity in how we deliver instruction and strive for a continuum of services, acknowledging the varying needs of pre-K through 12. And number seven, be intentional about matters of equity in meeting the needs of all students. These are our basic principles and goals that we need to think about when we move into this. We, when we do whatever it is, all-in-person, remote learning, or hybrid, we have been doing, when we did this in the spring and we had to do remote learning, we, we made it, our decisions on a, on a dime. These, these models that we've worked on, we've been working on for weeks. And it's going to look very differently, no matter which, which model we're in. And nothing is going to be perfect. And as I go through this process, I couldn't feel more proud of my colleagues and my administration. The way that we have pulled together as a community sets the stage where all our students, pre-K through 12, will learn, will learn and learn to be a strong member of our school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. All right. So I see approval of minutes on the agenda, but I don't see.
No, we, no minutes.
Say, I, do we have to move to table that officially, or no? That's all I'm just going to do.
Yep.
Move to table item two.
Second.
One second. Roll call vote, please. Jen?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
James?
James O'Brien, aye.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
And I'm also an aye, Andy Cattirelli. But as tables, item number three, reports from the superintendent.
Personnel updates, and we talked about some of our new hires. And then, and so some of our new teachers this year that were hired were hired prior to the last meeting. So the personnel update, we generally just do the people who've been, the movement since our last meeting. So we do have some new hires and some resignations. So we have Caroline Nichols as a grade one teacher. Jeanette Sabelli is a long-term substitute guidance counselor at the middle high school, who we both introduced tonight. Amanda Ross, a long-term substitute at the elementary school. Christine Amaral as a custodian at the middle high school. Collette Shalub as a long-term substitute at the elementary school. And then for resignations, we had Callan, sorry, Jessica Jankowski, an ESP at the elementary school. Tom Epstein, a bus driver. Barbara Larquisk, the bus monitor. And Caroline Ray Todd, a ESP at the elementary school. So that's our personnel movement since our last meeting.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Welcome to everybody that's new coming in, up to be on staff. And thank you all who are leaving us for your time here. So we go to item B, update on COVID-19 situation.
Okay. So as the community is well aware, we had two staff members who tested positive for COVID-19 in the past week. And as I said earlier, well, I'll start with the condition of both those staff members. So I've been, I've been in regular contact with them. They're both at home. They're both recovering at home. You know, I don't know if I, I'm not a medical professional, so I don't know how to gauge how sick they are. But they have been, they have been impacted. They're certainly symptomatic. So they are, they are having the COVID-19 symptoms that you hear about. But they are at home, and, and they are actually both showing, showing some improvement. And I do want to say, and I already mentioned this, that I know I informed the community that I was a, identified as a close contact. So I am at home. I have no symptoms, and I have had a negative test. And hopefully, things stay that way. And so far, we've done, we've done well in terms of not having any wider exposure beyond our two employees who tested positive. You know, and obviously, time will tell on that because the incubation period, whatever the term is you want to use, is up to 14 days. You know, so as I mentioned earlier, we, we did work with the mass COVID team in contact tracing. And we, and I thought that process went really well. We identified close contacts for both employees. And those close contacts have, you know, taken the recommendation or considered testing, and then also are quarantining. And then obviously, we had individual conversations with staff members. You know, some staff members who may not have been identified specifically as a close contact, but they felt that, you know, based on their interactions with the people who were positive over, over a period of time or a few days prior, you know, they've decided to get tested on their own. And so far, we have had nobody who's had contact or had a close contact with our two positive staff members have become. Have become symptomatic or have had a.
Hold on, yeah.
I'm going to mute everybody. There you go. Sorry about that. So so far, nobody who was identified as a close contact or on their own, you know, determining that they felt that they had had some level of contact with those staff members, has become symptomatic, has had a positive test result. So everybody who's been tested has had a negative test result. So at this time, you know, six or seven days removed from the last time a person, well, six days removed from the last time someone became symptomatic, we, it doesn't seem like we have any exposure beyond that. But again, it's going to take a little time to really tell that because the exposure period is up to 14 days. You know, so you know, me looking at my personal situation, because I'll use myself because I've identified myself. You know, so I have to be quarantined through next Thursday. That's the, that's my 14-day window. And you know, that would be, you know, really next Thursday or Friday would be people's 14-day windows. And I think if we get to next Friday and we have no one who becomes symptomatic or tests positive, and that's a conjecture because we don't know that right now. You know, we're only six, six or seven days in, and we know so far no one has become symptomatic or tested positive. So we have another week, in essence, to really know that we're in the clear. But you know, a week from now, if that's our situation, I think that bodes positively for the, the fact that, you know, taking the precautions that we're putting in place, those four things that we've been talking about in terms of wearing masks, washing your hands, maintaining social distancing, staying home if you're sick, that if we employ those four strategies, those four, the goal of those four strategies is to help mitigate the spread of the virus. And it doesn't mean that someone can't get it. It doesn't mean it can't spread. But those are all designed to mitigate and help control the spread. And, and not, not that we want to, not that we wanted to test those strategies this early on, but by having two employees who became ill. And then if we go the two weeks, and we go to next Friday, and there hasn't been a wider exposure, you know, that would be supportive of, in this situation, those strategies that we're going to put in place in any kind of in-person model, whether it be hybrid or full-in-person, are effective. And there's a value to wearing a face mask and maintaining social distancing and washing your hands and staying home when you're sick. But really, the key message I wanted to give the community from this update is that at this time, there has been no, no evidence of any spread beyond our two employees who tested positive. But time, you know, we still have some time to, to tell that with, in essence, another week to determine, or to say with a real, you know, say with some, I guess, I don't know, finality is the right word, that there was not an extended spread based on those two employees. Sort of a question about just the update of where we are in our current situation.
Anybody on the committee have a question for Scott on that update? James?
Just a comment. We had talked, Andy, I spoke to you and to Scott about making sure that, you know, that in a way, our, our thoughts are communicated to anybody that, you know, gets tested positive as far as staff members and putting something out to them as a committee. I know that wasn't discussed with everybody, but I think that's important that we're reaching out to people and making sure that as a committee as well, that, that, you know, we're recognizing that this is a difficult time. Anybody going through that is going to have a tough time. And, and, you know, extending not only our sympathies, but seeing if there's anything as a committee that we can do.
All right. That's, that's right. You did speak to me about that. I thought that was a good idea.
That is something we can definitely do.
Yeah. Anybody else on the committee have thoughts on, on that, on James' suggestion?
Well, Stephanie raised her hand. I don't know if it's specific to that suggestion.
Okay. Stephanie, go ahead.
Thank you. It's not, but I do agree with that, and that's a good idea, James. No, I just was more of a comment, really. I just wanted to say thank you to Scott for being so transparent and for the communication that you have shared with the district and with the community. I just wanted to say thank you because I know that that was a personal decision that you made. And I know that that's not always an easy thing to do, is to make yourself vulnerable and share that type of information about yourself. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate the fact that you did that and in the manner in which you did that. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else? No one else? I don't see anybody. Okay, well, let's move on to item C, discussion, possible vote on hybrid versus remote reopening model.
So I'm going to, I'm going to actually start with my recommendation in the beginning and then kind of explain the rationale for my recommendation. You know, so at this time, my recommendation is that we would begin school in a remote model on September 16th, and we would continue in that remote model through Friday, September 25th. And then transition to the hybrid model beginning Monday, September 28th. So it would be delaying the implementation of in-person learning by a week and a half. As part of that recommendation, I would, I do believe we should return our intensive special education students in person as we had planned to do so on September 17th. And I also am recommending that we begin preschool as we had planned to do so on September 21st. So that, that's my recommendation. And then I will start and give, you know, my background and my rationale for that recommendation. And there's a few points that I want to hit on in terms of that recommendation. The first one is, you know, so I just talked about our current COVID situation. And I think there, there has been some concerns about a wider spread based on, you know, the two employees testing positive. And ultimately, right now, the information I presented this evening is very positive about that. It does not seem like there's been a spread beyond those two employees. As I said, everyone who's had to be tested or has, so who's made a choice to be tested because of contact with those employees has tested negative and is showing no symptoms. But ultimately, the window for that is another week. So we would, we would, we'd be able to say with surety, you know, beginning in September, on September 21st, that we had gone the two weeks and there had not been a wider spread or exposure to other staff members. So that, that's part of the rationale for delaying a few days in terms of the opening. The other part of the rationale, which is, which is a major part of this, is we have to look at the employees who are affected by testing positive or by being contacts. And those employees were, were major players in terms of our operations. And so the reality is that some of our operational staff has been impacted by being quarantined, by being out. And, and that, that impacts our readiness in some ways to open school. And we have to take that into consideration. There couldn't have been a worse time for us to lose some of our operational staff. And, and the impacts here are really wide-ranging in a lot of ways. And, you know, I have to be careful in terms of my discussion here because I don't want to disclose who the staff members are. But, you know, I can give an example of, of a way in which our operations were impacted. And I think we've talked about this at a previous meeting. You know, we were having an outside contractor go through all our, all of our HVAC units at the middle high school. You know, I think there are some concerns in the community. There were concerns among the teaching staff, amongst really the people who work in that building, that, you know, that system is original to the building in 1988 when it opened. You know, so it's over 30 years old, and is it really giving the rate of exchange of air that it's supposed to be? So as an agreement, you know, we, we always do our regular maintenance on that. Our regular facility staff goes through those units every summer. Actually, it's part of what they do. Actually, it's part of what they do, but we actually agreed to have an outside mechanical contractor come in and actually inspect every unit at the middle high school. Because we wanted to ensure that those units were operating the way they're supposed to be operating and providing appropriate air exchange for every classroom. So the contractors who were working in the building, when they found out that there had been a positive test among some employees, they actually pulled out from the work they were doing and said that, you know, they were concerned that they may have had a possible exposure. And they wanted their employees who were working in the building to be tested and for them not to return to the building until they had negative test results. So those employees have, of the outside contractor, have had negative test results. And they're, they're planning on returning to that work of inspecting all those units on Monday. But they're saying it's going to take four to seven days to complete that work and inspecting all the units. Now, we, I will be very direct and say, we believe all those units are working effectively. But we also said that we would have those units inspected. And so that, you know, that's an unintentional consequence of us having an exposure within the school. And so that's one example, but there are other examples where having the exposure in the school limited, has limited our operational capacity over the past week and a half, which is the the crucial time as we're preparing to open school. And so part of the rationale for the recommendation is that our operations have been affected. And we want to ensure that when we do open the building to students, that everything's in place that we said would be in place. And that we were able to meet every standard that we've established for ourselves in terms of the opening of the school. And and it just, in some ways, it disappoints me to say it, but it's, it's, a lot of it was out of our control. Is, you know, that the reality is that our, the the positive cases we have is that impacted our ability to do that. And and though a week and a half will help us, well, it shouldn't say help us, a week and a half will allow us to meet the standard that we had established for ourselves for the opening of school. A third part of that recommendation in terms of students who are intensive special needs students and preschool students. The the guidance from the state has actually been very clear all along that unless, unless there was a closure of your building or a closure from the governor, or if you had a COVID incident that directly impacted the staff working either for our intensive special needs programs or our preschool programs, that the state strongly recommended that those students attend in person and you you avoid bringing them in in a remote setting. Our intensive special needs programs were in over the summer. We had, we did that successfully. So we believe even with some of our other concerns that we can open for our intensive special needs programs as we plan to meet that guidance and bring those students into school like we did this summer. So that week and a half as we, we finalize our other preparations and and also ensure that there has been a wider exposure for COVID nineteen within, within the community. And then also the same for preschool, preschool was planned to open on the twenty first. And, you know, we have not had, none of, none of the employees who tested positive had a direct impact on our intensive special needs programs or our preschool program. So we would support trying to stay with the guidance of bringing those students to the school and not putting them into a remote setting. You know, ultimately, we were, we were asked or tasked as a school district and all school districts were tasked to do this to establish three models, a remote model, a hybrid model and an in-person model. They asked you to attempt to be flexible in the implementation of those models and be able to transition from one to the other. And not, as I say, I I say it was some pain. But I I do, I I do believe it's the best recommendation for where we are right now. So start that remote model for a week and a half and then transition to the hybrid model, starting with students returning to school in person on Monday, September twenty eighth. So that, that's my recommendation at this time, and then I guess I'll, I'll turn it to the, to the committee.
All right, thank you, Scott.
So Stephanie raised her hand.
Stephanie. I've done unmute.
All right, my mouse fell asleep. I wanted to make a motion.
Okay.
If that's okay at this time. I move that we begin school in the remote model on September sixteenth and continue in the remote model through September twenty fifth and transition to the hybrid model on Monday, September twenty eighth for all students except preschool and intensive special education programs who will start in person as planned.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we hear a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Anybody else like to chime in on this topic? Jason?
So based on the last time we met, I mean, I was in favor for this at the beginning. And I'm actually in favor of having it be October fifth instead of September twenty eighth because we meet again on the twenty fourth. And what if? Well, if we have to change again, is that enough time to change again? That's a minor thing, but it's something that we should consider. Now, I have another question, which, which is about the process in general, but not this vote, not this exact motion. I don't know if I'd be allowed to ask it. It's about enrollment with hybrid and remote. Am I allowed to ask that now because there's no other COVID place on there?
Yes.
To ask that question.
Yeah, maybe I'll address that concern that was brought up in the comments, if that's where you're going, Jason.
So, yeah, go ahead. No, I I have a separate one. My question is, you know, with everything going on, there might be parents who who have decided hybrid, who now, based on new information, want to change remote. Is there a process or is it cut off? What, can you just give an update, just in general to the public on what?
So we, we've allowed flexibility. And, you know, I know that the guidance really says that, you know, parents should have flexibility. And there, the, this actually came up in the commissioners meeting, there was a meeting with the commissioner this week and this discussion came up. Because some schools districts, and we haven't done this, but some schools districts have set like almost hard numbers of, you know, you made your choice, you're going to be remote until the end of the first term or you're going to be hybrid till the first term, you can't change your model once you select it. And the commissioner reiterated that he realizes that there obviously there's impacts and that the school district might have to establish a timeframe, whether it's a week, a couple of weeks, to transition between models. But they openly, they, ultimately, they want people to, to be fluid on that and to allow that change. So I've, I've taken that position, you know, throughout this, in general, my position has been I want to follow the guidance that's been given to me. So the guidance is that we should allow people to transition models, whether they want to go to hybrid to remote, remote to hybrid. And and so we've allowed that. So that, that application for a change to a remote is, is, it's still happening. So I actually, this, this is your remote only preferences. And I showed you this at the last meeting. And this is updated based on, these numbers are updated based upon changes that have happened in the last couple of weeks since we've met. And this, so kindergarten hasn't changed at all. The restart of the twenty was still twenty for remote applications. Kindergarten went from twenty five to, kindergarten went up one to twenty five. That's what the plus one means. Second grade went up three to twenty seven. Two, there's two of them that are purple. The purple are people who have changed this week. And in general, the purple people have stated their reason for change is that we had two positive cases amongst employees and that made them nervous. So that two is included in the plus three, but I wanted to show you that. So right now, you know, that number is twenty seven. The numbers in purple, we were going to go back and follow up with those people and say, if the district did decide to stay remote for whatever period of time, a week, a week and a half, two weeks, October fifth, Jason, as you said, you know, would they reconsider that, you know, if they had more information that there wasn't a larger community spread? So that's why we've kind of left them in purple as, you know, we're going to go back and follow up with those people after tonight's meeting. And I'm not going to go through the whole charts. The numbers are here for you, you can see it. But that's the concept is, the number is, the black number is the number as it really stands currently. The plus is how many people have added since this number was originally presented to you. The purple are people who added this week who are counted in the plus number. I don't know if that's confusing. So the tw- second grade, twenty seven, plus three, it counts two people who switched this week. But we're going to follow up with after the school committee makes a decision. You know, so if the school committee accepted my recommendation, we would go back to them and say, you know, the, the district, you know, you were concerned about positive cases in the community, in the school community. The district's going to start in a remote fashion for a couple of weeks. If that flushes out and it turns out there was no community spread, would you be comfortable staying in the hybrid model? We're going to follow up and have those conversations. And, you know, and we have, we've had a couple, we've had one minus, so we, the twelfth grade, it went from seven to six. So one person returned to hybrid. And I actually know there was, there was a couple of conversations happening today where we had some people who had chosen a remote who were thinking of coming back in the hybrid model. So the, this, that was a very long answer to your question, Jason. The answer to your question is, you know, we're trying to maintain flexibility as much as we can. The only thing I have to be cognizant of, and I do want to point out, and I think we talked about this at the last meeting, is if our remote number became really large at a grade level, we may not be appropriately staffed for that at this time. So then we might have to consider using, I know that we've had this conversation a lot about the educational platform and edgenuity. So, you know, so looking at that second grade number as an example, if that number got to thirty, that would become concerning. And then bottom line is, we have made staffing decisions based on these numbers and we can't always be changing our staffing decisions. And we can't be pulling a teacher from the building who's with kids to become a remote teacher at this time. So then we'd have to say, you know, based on, based on this number, we would have to consider using the educational platform and not a cover teacher based on how the numbers play out. And then, since I'm on a roll, if that's okay with the committee, I will respond to the question that came up earlier about would, if the school committee took my recommendation tonight and voted to start remote for a week and a half, and would the people who've chosen full remote be integrated back into the classrooms? And the answer at this time would be no, because unless those people were agreeing to start hybrid on September twenty eighth, that, that in essence wouldn't make, make sense. So it wouldn't make sense to have a student for a week and a half join their, their, their peers in the, at the high school level, who, in regular classes, and then when they went to the hybrid model, not participate in that. So based on the length, you know, it would be, I think it would be a different discussion if we were really talking about a long-term move to remote. You know, some, you know, if we got into November and whatever, I, I don't want to speculate, but all of a sudden, you know, the governor, if the governor said, hey, we're going to close schools for three months, maybe that would be a different discussion at that time. But based on a short transition, we would not do that. So sorry, Jay, I don't know if that was our two.
That's fine, you know what, you, that's fine. And then I just have one other thing for now. Can this ventilation testing be done with students in the, in the school? I think that's, that's a contributing factor to this decision. Because if we have people working in the school.
Right, but so I gave that as one example
Right.
of, of how we're affected operationally. I didn't want to go into detail every example because I feel like, because some of our examples may indicate specific employees.
Scott, hold on, Scott, hold on for a sec, please. Just let Jason finish the end of his question.
I don't even know what it was.
You were talking about the, the units not being
All the kids are in school.
Yeah, and, 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 um, I know that was just one example. I'm just, I'm just anticipating that question coming up and being a discussion point. I just wanted to get it out of the way now. That's all.
I, I would think that those units, I would think those units would have to be inspected after school hours if kids were in school. So based on seeing that happening, it couldn't happen in a classroom setting while class, it would have to happen after hours.
Thank you.
All right, any further conversation from committee members on this motion?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just want to make a clarification. Jason didn't modify the motion with his statement, right? Okay, all right, thanks.
That was, that was just an opinion, not a, not a motion.
Okay. I'll be frank, I really was not a fan of pushing back the in-start date at all. I still feel super strongly it's important to get our kids in school as soon as possible. But I trust Scott's judgment when he says that administration needs more time. And with key personnel being either quarantined or ill, it doesn't vote itself well for us as a school community. And I want our kids in school safely. I want our teachers teaching safely. And so that's all I have to add. I'm, and if, I'm ready to vote unless other people have more comments.
Thank you, Jen. James?
Yeah, this is, this is, uh, this was unexpected to me in a way. In all the discussions that we've had, this really hasn't been part of the conversation. So this is something that evolved recently. And I have to say, you know, I, I, I'm not sure as an administrative team if this was full support all the way across. And I understand the concerns and as an educator, I understand the concerns and risks fully and what's going on and the difficulties and changes that are going on. And Scott, I think I support you, you know, try to do as much as I possibly can to give you that autonomy to support you the way I can, but I don't think I can support this this way because it just sort of, I don't know, I, I feel like, you know, we're talking about a couple of days. If you were talking about taking the three days off that week and making them remote and then starting up on Monday or even the, the following Wednesday, somewhere giving a little bit of extra time. But I, I think, you know, you say it's a short amount of time, but to, to a lot of people who do have to pay for daycare and take care of all this, this is becoming really, really difficult. And regardless of the reality of it being a week and a half, you're putting mental stress on people that's making it feel like it's never going to happen again. And to Jen's point, I think there has to be a reality to these kids getting in school. And and I understand it's only a week and a half, but I think this is not as much of a safety issue as it's being presented as an administrative issue and things that aren't able to get taken care of because of this situation. And and I think that's something that maybe needs to try to be expedited quicker than that timeframe to make it occur quicker. So I won't be supporting the motion as it's presented.
James, I don't know if I, I, are you proposing a revision or just not as presented?
I would accept the revision because I think I understand what you're talking about. And I know that there's some difficulties that are going to come along with that. But I think that, you know, if you look at the number of families that are here right now, I'm probably speaking for a lot of them saying, I understand that, but my kids need to get in school. And I think we need to find a way to get in school. And I, and I think that it doesn't necessarily have to be a full week and a half for you to fix or to rectify what has, what has, what has come about because of this. I think there maybe needs to be a little more expeditious way to get it done in a better way. I don't think it needs to be the full week and a half.
So that means, James, if you want to offer an amendment to the original motion, we could take up the amendment if you wanted to offer that to change the original motion.
Well, I would gladly, I guess it would depend on, on, on what people's thoughts are on the way. You know, I don't want to waste everybody's time if nobody else is willing to support that. For me, I, I would think that between, you know, if you start those first three days remote and then you've got that weekend ahead, even if you get two days in, for one example, such as you said, that, that the HVAC system, I get that's the only example. You're, you're very limited without being able to give the information to, for people to really sympathize with what you're saying. So it kind of puts you in a tough spot, you know, because you have some things that need to be taken care of, but it's really hard to classify it without being able to clarify it. So
I mean, so I'll, I'll say a little clarifier is transportation's a concern.
All right.
Well, but I mean, I, I guess in a sense, it's always a concern and I know the concerns that we have. And, and again, I, I think there's enough people here that are going to support and, and, and as I always do, support you and, and what you're trying to do. I just really think we need to try to find a way to do this a little quicker and, and get kids back into school because I think there's a lot of people's lives that really need that as well. I just really think we need to try to find a way to do this a little quicker and, and get kids back into school, because I think there's a lot of people's lives that really need that as well.
And I, I appreciate those comments, James, and I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. And I, you know, there's, there's a lot of parents on this call, because it, it is a tremendous, what I'm asking for is a tremendous impact on families. And I would not, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize that, acknowledge that.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, James. I have a question. I'm going to ask a question before we go forward. Without giving names.
Right, go ahead, Andy, sorry.
Without giving names or anything like that, has there been any impact on our teaching staff through this?
No, so I actually meant to say that. So there are no teachers who were identified as close contacts in this situation. Is all, all operational staff or administrative staff, obviously I've identified myself as administrator. So it was operational staff and administration.
So to James' point, it is a more of an administration issue, and I, I understand that as well. I'm going back on the point of Jason's question about the HVAC systems being gone through. Do we want to have that done with the kids in the class? You know, I mean, I think that, I think we all agreed to have it done before. So the, the question is, how soon could they get that done?
They, their answer was four to seven days.
Starting.
Starting Monday, starting on Monday. They said they'll be back in the building on Monday, and they will complete it in four to seven days.
And do they work on the weekend?
I don't think, I mean, I guess we could ask, but they're, right now, they're telling us they'll be back in the building on Monday.
All right.
So I can't answer that question if they would work the weekend in between or what, how, I don't know if Brad would have a better answer for that. But like, like anything, you could always ask.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, you can ask, it's just not guaranteed.
Right. All right, well, I, I mean, I, I'll just chime in myself. I mean, I full and wanted the kids back in school full-time as the conditions present themselves as, you know, as soon as possible. But the other, the other aspect of this isn't something we've always talked about, is that we might have to shift between models as the situation on the ground presents itself. And so I think it's, it's prudent of us to, to take these things into consideration. But it also puts a, like James said, puts a burden, and you Scott, it's a burden on the parents that need to get their kids back into school. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know if I could support a week and a half. I mean, maybe a week, but if it could be, everything be done in a week, I would, I would support that to support you and the administration and making sure the, the school opens up correctly and safely. And if we can get those HVAC units looked at, but those are just my thoughts. So if anybody else has anything else to add on that.
So everyone, everyone has their end up. So Jason, Stephanie, Jen.
Okay, I can't see the.
Stephanie hasn't talked yet, so it should be her.
Okay, Stephanie. Steph.
Thank you, Jason. Sorry, I just unmuted. Everyone knows that I had, I agree with what Jason had said. We, we had wanted more time at, at the beginning as we have discussed previously. And I think listening to, you know, Scott, especially given what's happened, you know, in the building, I want us to be in the best position to be able to offer, you know, the best start to this school year that we possibly can. And I understand that this places more of a burden on parents. I understand that perspective completely, and I know that this year is going to be a challenge for every parent, regardless of what model we're in or when we start, this year is going to be challenging for everyone. I just want us to be in the position to, you know, offer the best possible experience that we can and have the buildings ready and have everything ready so that we can try to start off and set ourselves up for a success right from the very beginning. Not to say there's not going to be bumps along the way, because I'm sure there'll be issues that will arise. But if our superintendent is making this recommendation, then I feel he has my full support because I have trust in him and in his building administrators and in his administrative team that they know they have a much better idea and clearer picture of what's needed on the ground in the buildings to kick this school year off successfully. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Who's next? Jason or Jen?
Jason, then Jen.
Jen can go. I'll defer to her first.
Okay, Jen.
I wanted to, I know that your recommendation, Scott, was for Monday, the twenty eighth. But a lot of what James said resonated with me. If we were to offer an amendment of just one week and moving it to, trying to pull up the calendars, at the twenty.
Wednesday, the twenty third, second.
Yeah, Wednesday, the twenty third. If we were to offer an amendment to Wednesday, the twenty third, and I don't know if Brad is here and he can speak, you know, can, you, you said transportation is a concern. Can we be in a place where we're ready? I know that everyone who's on quarantine will be off quarantine by that point, so HVAC should be all set by that point.
So I'll, I'll, I'll respond to that terms of.
I've, I seconded that motion, by the way.
There was no motion made.
I wasn't making a motion. I wanted an answer to the question first.
All right, let's, let's not all talk over each other. So Scott, go ahead, please.
Okay, thanks, Eddie. You know, ultimately, can we, we do a week? We can, we can do a week. You know, and it's interesting that when school was originally going to start, the date of Wednesday, September sixteenth, was really selected by the Department of Education. So I don't know if we would have said, hey, we're going to start on a Wednesday. But in essence, when DESI changed the school year from a hundred and eighty days to a hundred and seventy days, they said you're required to start by Wednesday, the sixteenth. And the way our schedule had already laid out in terms of special development, that actually worked for us. But I don't know if I would have picked the Wednesday to start. So so then there was some discussion amongst the administrative team that maybe if we were going to transition Monday, a model, that Monday might make more sense to do that. You know, ultimately, it does give us four more days with the weekends. But if, you know, obviously, if the, if the committee, if the committee's will was to delay a week, and then that also start the way we intended to start, and I honestly, I don't know if that helps the community or not in terms of their daycare and their planning. But I guess so if we started on a similar plan to how we had planned to start, I'd see that, that might help some people and be beneficial to them. And, you know, we would, we could, we could do that.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Jen? Okay, Jason?
Thank you. With starting, just not do, just starting on that other Wednesday, we're talking about just M through Z kids. Two additional days. No, it wasn't a question, it was more of a. No, it's okay. It was just a statement of, on that. And I, I just feel like we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. That's, that's pretty much this whole situation over the last few months. However, the more, you know, when I, when I'm just, I'm, sorry, I'm trying to gather this here. Here, I keep hearing the term, get these kids back in school. The kids will still be getting remote learning. Yes, I know what the immediate thing is. And remote learning is not the same as in-person teaching. Remote learning was no good in the spring. Teachers have had a significant amount of time to, and, and schools and administration to improve this, this remote learning process. So I think saying, well, we need to get the kids in school because they need to, like, kids are going to be getting instruction daily regardless, whether we're in hybrid, whether we're in remote. So I, I want to put trust in the teachers that their remote plans are solid and they're going to, and they're going to be able to learn from the spring and, and do awesome. And I just think keeping it, you know, that, those two days, I mean, I, I like the original motion. I, I don't see a huge benefit for those two days, I feel like. And, and as almost everyone has said, you know, we are going off Scott's recommendations, and if his recommendation is they need that time, then we should give them that time. And I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Eddie, can I hop in real quick?
Of course you can, Brad.
So Jen, just to answer your question on transportation. Transportation right now has been slow as it goes, just designing the routes. And we've also had a couple of issues in the last couple of days with actually even logging on to the TransFinder system, which generates our routes. So we actually have to plug them into that. We get a kickback, and then we have to map out all the street addresses, and that's what we submit to parents. To say I'm comfortable that starting on Wednesday, Wednesday, the twenty third.
Be Thursday, twenty fourth.
Be in-person Thursday, twenty fourth. The, the thing I want everyone to remember is, it's not, it's, I, I know from, from an in-school person, it's two days, but on the operation side, which we desperately need more time on, not only does it give us those two days, it gives us the two additional days on the weekend that are just crucial right now with how far we, we're behind. So can the routes be done and have ready to go for the twenty third? Probably. Would I feel better if it's starting on the twenty eighth? Absolutely, because that way we can get them out to the parents. They have more time to look at them, set plans for if they have a grandparent, family member picking up at their house, whatever it may be. It gives them more time to view that. In addition, on the operations and facilities piece, it really buys us another four days, if you include Thursday, Friday, and the two weekend days that really are imperative right now, in my opinion.
All right, thank you, Brad. James, did you want to, I can't see who has a hand up. Does anybody have?
James has his hand up.
James, go ahead. Okay, forget, forget it, James. Anybody else wants to speak on this? Feel free. All right, so now we have a, we have a motion on the floor with a second for Scott's original proposal, our recommendation. So I'm going to ask one more time. Is there any further discussion on this? Anybody? Scott, are your hands up?
No, sorry, there are no hands up.
Okay, all right, seeing none, we're going to move ahead with the vote on this. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with James O'Brien.
James O'Brien, no.
Okay, Jen Pratt.
Jen Pratt, aye.
Stephanie Clarity.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
All right, so it doesn't matter. I, I will vote, but I, I would vote no myself. But it doesn't matter.
Your vote gets counted, Eddie.
It always matters, Andy.
Yeah, and, 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 yeah, Andy, don't say that. Your, your vote absolutely matters. It's your voice, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I like to have the members go first and, you know, and so anyway, so that's the end of that vote. Your, your recommendation passes, Scott. All right, so where am I? Scott, oh, here we are. So now we move on to what, Fall Athletics.
The Fall Athletics, so I'd like to invite Athletic Director Phyllis Bowie and Assistant Athletic Mike Santos. They're going to do a presentation on the plan for fall sports for the Social League and kind of give us an overview of what the league's thinking and how they want to approach the fall season.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for having us. Just wanted to give an overview of what Fall Sports is going to look like at Cover Middle High School. Just as administration for the opening of school has been working all summer. So have in the athletic directors of the Social League, which is the league that we belong to. We have been working all summer with several meetings. Just like with school, we've had a lot of changes with sports and the start of sports. And we are continuing to have meetings with, within our league, with our administration. So as of right now, we're looking to open the season on September twenty fifth. That will be the first day of practice and tryouts. And we will officially start events on October ninth for cross-country soccer and field hockey. And the golf season will open up October first. We, obviously, we will not be having football and cheerleading this fall, and that was a decision made by the MIAA. And volleyball has also been moved. We normally have volleyball in the fall. It is an indoor sport. So on the recommendation of administration and athletic directors, we have decided to push that along with cheerleading and football to a fourth season that we now have, which is called Fall Two. And Fall Two will open the end of February and will run until pretty much the, the end of April. We have, you know, still some more work to do. Scott, right now, is showing you a press release, a press release that the athletic directors have sent out. We did it individually at each school, but this is a press release from the entire Social League. And again, explains when the first day of practice will be, schedule will look like as far as having a JV schedule. Because of the short season that we obviously are going to have, we have designed a new schedule that consists of only playing within the league. Normally, we play, we do play a league schedule, but we also add several non-leagues to each sport. And that could mean, you know, a lot more travel. Having the, having us play within the league keeps us, you know, a small group not traveling far. And basically, all the kids seeing each other, you know, once or twice throughout the season. Other than that, you know, we, we'll be working with administration, working with the school nurse and our athletic trainer, you know, who has been with us for four years, I know, four years, I believe. And he actually, I feel very lucky to have him. He is subcontracted from Brigham and Women's Hospital. And he has spent the summer along with other athletic trainers and physicians and medical staff on writing guidelines, additional guidelines to what we already have from the MIA COVID nineteen task force, from DESI, from the Department of Health. So he and I, and Mike Santos, you know, we've met several times and we will continue to meet in going over guidelines and all that we need to pass along to our players, to our parents, to our coaches, to our staff, to make it a safe environment for the start of fall sports. I don't know if Mike Santos has anything to offer or anything that I may have missed.
No, Phyllis, I think you did a good job with covering all that. I know we talked a little bit earlier, Scott, I don't know if that's the link, but if you do go to the MIAA.net website, what Scott's showing you right now, there is a link there that basically just goes over all of the general safety rules for each sport that's going to be played in the fall. And then on top of that, I'm not going to get into each one, because they are kind of lengthy, but it breaks down each sport and the changes that they've made within each sport. So if you have any questions about it, you can go to this page and hopefully they'll have all the answers for you.
And then can you guys just elaborate on the practice rule and why golf can start sooner than the other sports? It'd just be good for the community, committee to know that. How many days of practice you have to have before you can start to compete?
Yeah, golf is a little bit different than a, a regular sport because it is a non-contact sport. It's more actually of an individual sport, and they are off-campus. Obviously, they're going to, they're going to a home course for their events. And the guidelines for golf, they're not as lengthy, and the modifications are not as lengthy as the other sports. Basically, for golf, it's just a matter of no handshaking. You have to use. Basically, for golf, it's just a matter of no handshaking, you have to use your own balls. You can't, you know, you have to bring your own, you know, equipment. And it's much easier to keep golfers six feet apart on a golf course. And golf is usually, their numbers are usually a little bit lower than some of other sports, so it's a lot easier to manage as well for the coach. But there, if you look on the COVID-19 sports requirements, it does give you a breakdown of all of the new guidelines. And they're pretty much the same for all sports. The only thing you will find different is when you click on each sport itself, when you get to the end, it's clearly gonna give you the specific modifications for that particular sport. So if you, if you wanted to, what you're looking at now for field hockey, everything that you see is basically everything you will see on every single sport for the fall. It will change at the very end when it gets into the modifications because obviously each sport is different and all the modifications are gonna be different for each sport. So that's the reason for golf to start a little bit earlier, October 1st. Not only that, the other problem too is with daylight. Golf is starting obviously very late, they usually end mid-October. So they have, you know, a very, it's a very short season to begin with, but we were able to at least get them out there three times a week. You know, hoping that the golf courses, which I heard are very busy right now during this. We're lucky that we have a really good relationship with Scroll Run and they're very good to us. So I feel confident that we should be all set with our schedule for golf.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on this?
Jason raised his hand.
Jason.
I move that fall sports start at their originally scheduled timeframe.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the fall sports schedule.
We got the second, yeah, second from Jane.
We got the second from James.
And just, Andy, just a procedural piece.
Yes.
Since in our previous vote, we voted to start school in-person on the 28th. The community does have to vote to allow kids to start sports prior to that in-person date. So the proposal for league is to start, the first day of practice could be Friday, the 25th. And so this community does have to take this up and vote to allow the kids to begin practice prior to in-person school beginning.
My motion satisfies that, right?
It does, yep, absolutely. Just wanted to make sure it was clear on that of why we need to motion and vote on this.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this motion?
I just want to give a thanks to them. This is a lot of work you guys have to go through and it's never-ending. It's not gonna stop either, it's gonna be changing for a while. So what you're putting in is really appreciated for the, for the kids of this town to be able to get back into what they want to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, James, and I concur with that. Okay, it's a roll, roll call vote on this. We will start with the guy in front of me, on my screen, James O'Brien.
James O'Brien, aye.
Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
Stephanie Clarity.
Stephanie Clarity, aye, and thank you for all of your hard work also.
Thank you.
Jen Pratt.
Aye.
Okay, Andy Cottrelli's an aye as well, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, we really appreciate your presentation tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Phyllis, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, we're heading on to.
So we have elementary school handbook changes.
Right.
And then each, and then the elementary school is gonna present, talk a little about their COVID website. So I think Tanya Dawson is doing this presentation. Tanya and Ruby together?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the handbook changes, Scott, and then Ruby and I are gonna take it from there.
Okay.
Awesome-looking website, by the way.
Thank you. I like looking at it now that it's finished. So this year, very minimal changes. Of course, all dates and names have been updated and placed into the handbook correctly in alphabetical order. And all the school committee members are in there as well. Just very minor changes this year, which I'm super happy about. We just had on page three, I changed the language to assertive instead of achieving. The MCAS dates on page 12 were listed for the 2019-2020 school year. However, I just wrote in there dates to be determined as we may or may not have MCAS. On page 22, fever was not in the handbook, so I've added that. On page 47, there's a complaint procedures for parents, which was requested for us to have in our handbook to meet requirements. I know I put NAEC in there, but it's actually N-A-E-Y-C for the National Association of Early Childhood Education. If you continue to go down. Also, this falls under the N-A-E-Y-C, the mandated reporting also needed to be in our student handbook as well. And finally, arrival and end-of-day dismissal for our current school year, the changes have been added to our new handbook. I also, we also created a handbook COVID addenda. Oh my gosh, my battery is at 10%.
You still hear you.
Okay, great. So in the addendum, you will find all all the changes that were made in our opening guidance, such as bus transportation, how students are gonna enter our building, traveling in the hallways, restrooms, breakfast, snack, recess. It's a great little resource and all of these items have been added.
They're all on the website as well, right?
On the website.
And I just wanted to add to Mr. Neefan, to everyone, that most of this is what we're going to go over at our parent night information session next Tuesday evening. We have two options for meetings, a 2 o'clock and a 6 p.m. So we will go into this in more detail and have an opportunity for parents to give up, to ask questions.
Okay, thank you, Ruby.
So we probably need a motion on the handbook changes themselves and then obviously questions as well. And then that's separate from the website, but then after we address the handbook changes, then we'll have them present the website, which doesn't necessarily need a motion or a vote on it. And a couple of people raised, Jen raised her hand and Jason raised.
I'd make a motion to accept the changes as listed with the correction of the.
NYA.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Oh, but it doesn't, just, no, Mr. O'Brien, it's not in the handbook listed, like I need this for.
Well, that was just your side of.
That was just for me to let you guys know what the changes were and why making the changes.
Okay, the changes were just specifically on the left-hand side, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So same motion.
Right, we have a motion and Jason gave you a second already. So we have a motion and a second, further discussion of, does Jen?
Jen raised her hand, yep.
Okay, Jen.
I have a generic question about the handbook, but it, I don't think it affects the motion. So if you want to take the vote first, I can ask afterwards.
No, ask it now, it's fine.
I just have, I've had a lot of parents ask about mask requirements and what that'll be in the handbook and if the school has changed their position on whether gators will be allowed or if they're gonna specify what kind of masks need to be worn. And so I wanted to ask that question this evening as we discuss the handbook on what is going to be required, what is the requirement regarding masks and gators? And if we're specifying types or are we allowing any face covering?
And I can answer that. So as you all know, masks are required from second grade on up. Our procedure with masks for K and 1 will be that they will, they are required on the bus and they will be required in the hallways and in the common areas. Once K and 1 students are in the classroom, that's where they can take their masks off and teachers will be working with them to practice with proper mask removal and then putting them back on. So for example, if children need to exit to leave the restroom, they will need to put their mask back on and go into the hallway and go to the restroom. And then to your next question about masks versus gators, so there is some information out there about gators in terms of whether they're effective enough. Right now, what we've decided to do as this elementary school is that we're not going to accept the gators just because we don't have information out there that is sufficient enough to indicate that they are as helpful as the actual mask. So yes, we do want our parents to have specific masks that cover the child's nose and mouth and that is not a gator. Did that answer your question?
Is there any requirement that the mask be a two-ply or a three-ply or a medical grade or anything of that nature?
No, it can be a cloth mask, it can be a paper mask. What we do want is that it just fits the child properly. It covers their face and nose and it doesn't droop below the nose. We just want it to have a snug fit. And we have some videos actually on our website that we're going to show you. We'll actually go over that a little bit now and we're gonna, we can spend some time more on it next Tuesday.
So Ruby, the gator, the gator question, is that something you're gonna go back to periodically to find out if the, if the data has changed on it? Because I know a lot of people are wearing them and I actually have one that seems more comfortable than a regular mask and it stays on my nose tighter, you know, but I don't know how, I mean, I don't know how really effective it is. So I understand your concern with that.
And that's a really good question, Andy. You know, the reason that we actually ended up at this point and making this decision with the gators is because we were actually going to purchase a logoed gator for every child at the elementary school. And we were investigating this quite extensively in the end of July. And I had looked all, we were getting quotes, we were getting quotes from various different companies and I was having samples sent to my house, I have a whole bunch of samples, because that's what we really felt at the time would be more beneficial and easier for our children. We really wanted a mask that was going to be easy for the little ones to manage and to not have to be taking off and putting on a desktop, for example. So believe me, I was all for gators. And then as we were researching it over the course of several days, I started receiving emails and just from, from some of our internal staff that knew that we were researching this, just saying, oh, Ruby, take a look at this, I just saw this article. And, and so we decided that at that point, we just needed to go with the masks until more information was out. But to your point, yes, we can continue to look at that. And as information evolves and we gather more information, we'd like to, obviously, what I am going to advocate for is, is a mask that works for the children.
Right. All right, well, thank you, Ruby, I appreciate that. Like I said, I just, I bought one and it actually had inside liner, so it was like two pieces of cloth. The inside liner was kind of like the inside of a swimsuit, you know, that type of material?
Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't know how effective it is. I mean, I wish we didn't have to have the kids wear masks at all, especially the little kids, you know, but, but it is what it is, right?
Yes, and so we ended up purchasing masks that are cloth for the children and are actually, I believe they're three-layer.
Oh, okay.
We give one, one each to every child.
Now, are those cloth, really a cloth or paper?
They're cloth, they're cloth. And those are the ones with a logo. We do have masks, like backup masks. We did deliver some to every classroom and every support staff this week and last week. So we do have available to give to children if they lose it, if it gets soiled, if it falls on the floor. We will have backup masks for the children.
Okay, thank you very much, Ruby, I appreciate all the extra info. And Tanya, thank you as well. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second on the floor on the elementary handbook. Any further discussion? Okay. Scott, do you see any hands?
Nope, no hands.
Okay, okay, it's a roll call vote. Jen Pratt.
Aye.
Aye, taking the vote for elementary handbook.
Yes, Jen Pratt, aye.
Oh, aye, oh, sorry, I thought you said, I thought you said hi. How you doing?
Voting yes.
Stephanie Clarity.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien.
James O'Brien, aye.
And Andy Cottrelli's an aye as well. Thank you very much, ladies.
All right, well, now Ruby and Tanya are gonna show their website. So, you know, the approach that the district has taken in terms of providing information for parents is the feeling that the website might be more user-friendly than the handbook per se. So both buildings have built what they're calling a COVID website that they're gonna use and share with parents next week during parent meetings to really talk about the policies and procedures around in-person learning when we return to school. So I think Ruby's gonna take us through her website a little bit and then Mike Schultz is gonna take us through the middle high school website. And I think Jason raises his hand.
Jason.
It's about the website, but I will let them, it's, once the elementary website presentation's done, but I'll wait until it's all done, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I am going to sort of kick, kick this off and just kind of give you a little bit of more background. And I do have to say a big shout-out and a thank you to Mike Schultz. He and I have, you know, just been working together to share resources, communicate with each other, help each other out because, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to be as efficient as possible and managing various things that are happening every day. And so he talked to me about his Google site about a week and a half ago. No kidding, about a week and a half ago, he had done some extensive work on it. His staff had been giving him some input. And I reached out to Tanya and Paula one late night and I said, take a look at this, this looks great. I think it would be amazing to have this at the elementary school as well. It'll be good for our families so that it's consistent in terms of accessing Google sites. And so Tanya, who, you know, she, she said, I'm in, I'll help, I'll get started. And in a week, less than a week and a half, she has just done yeoman's work to put together the Google sites link. So I'm going to have her go ahead and share some of these things. But basically, we wanted it to be a site that had all of our updated resources around COVID. Again, taking a lot of Mike's examples, so including all the reopening plans, the resources that we have from our health office. We've outlined our focus here and our focus, you know, we're kid-focused. We're kid-focused and we're staff-focused because that's what we do. So we're trying to make this very friendly for our parents and a quick go-to and guide where you can access information. And so I'm going to go ahead and let Tanya take you through it, but it does have all of the procedures that we're going to spend time with our parents on next week. We've gone through many of these procedures with our staff over the last few days. And they've had an opportunity to look at it. I realize they have their hands full in the last few days, but they've had an opportunity to look at this also and weigh in and give us some feedback on how it's, how it's evolving. And I will say that, it is still evolving because I can tell you tonight, something's gonna come up and we're gonna say, oh, that's gonna be perfect to put in our Google site for our parents. So go ahead, Tanya, I'll let you go.
So I definitely see this as something that we're gonna be like adding to or making changes on. It does have, I like to, like, it's a one-stop shop. So if you, Scott, so our reopening plans that were written by the, by our committees, that you can find all that information. that you can find all that information there. And then on resources, if you click on the resources, it's gonna come up with a variety of resources that were COVID related to the district. And if you scroll down, we have, we had our focus, which we did, that's our fall reopening guidance because of COVID. So the next section is just our focus and then our school supply list. And clicking on the link, you'll be able to go to whichever grade level your the, your child's in and have the school supply list. And if you just scroll down, then we have the elementary handbook as well as the addendum on the website. And then, so right here, hey, Scott, can you click on Coyote Car Riders Pickup/Drop Off? So here's the information that you're gonna need as a, as a parent or a guardian if you're gonna be a coyote car rider. Okay. And then we have PM pickup, AM drop off. And the second page tells you if you're dropping off a preschool student. Okay, so and all the other links are just, again, very similar to the last one. So parents know what we're doing.
It might be helpful too to just take a look at that Chromebook information link.
Okay.
That one, since we have Chromebooks distrib, being distributed tomorrow. So if there are any parents on the call tonight, just as a reminder, we do have our Carver Elementary Chromebook schedules set up here for you. And so we're going to be starting at nine AM. And so we have our A through K tomorrow. And then we have our L through Z on Monday. And we, basically, if you can't fit in your slot in the morning, just come to the school in the afternoon from four to five. Thank you, Scott.
Alrighty. And then if you scroll down, we have some lovely videos.
Do you wanna watch one of them?
Well, do.
Not mine, please.
Not mine. So we have a new procedure for dropping off items for parents. Let's say your child forgets their backpack or their lunch. We're gonna have a table outside and we're gonna ask parents to. Oh, you're gonna play the video. Okay, Scott.
Hi, can I help you? Hi, it's Miss Doe. I'm here to drop off my child's backpack and lunch. Please make sure it's labeled and leave it on the table and I will come and retrieve it. Thank you. You're welcome.
Very nice.
That's a little tutorial. And then we have one for the bathroom and a little one for the mask breaks. And, you know, like Ruby and I mentioned, you know, it's gonna be something that we're gonna be adding to. We have a new Carver Coyote greeting, which is super cute because we're not gonna be able to hug children or, you know, high five them. So we got the little coyote. I can't do it right yet, but it's coyote wave or the coyote wiggle for the younger kids. And right here, we have some videos for proper hand washing, how to wear a mask properly and why we have to wear a mask in school and on the bus. And here's some information about properly fitting mask. And actually, the gator information is on there right there on the top left. And you scroll down, we just wanted parents to know what our cafeteria is gonna look like. And we have some Chromebook information. Oh, this is, these are tutorials that Jane put up this afternoon for us. How to use click and drag, Chromebook 101, shortcuts, just to help parents out.
It's a lot of information.
That's a good resource.
So I thank you for the, all the time and age you guys have put into putting this together. I don't know if there's any specific questions from the committee. I think Jason had his hand up in the beginning.
Jason, do you have anything still?
I do. This is more logistical. I don't know if this is on purpose or not, but I tried logging into this under my personal account and it was blocked. I was able to log in through my Carver account. So it looks like only Carver email addresses can actually access this right now, based on what I just did. I don't know if that was intentional or not.
Oh, thank you. Um, I did not realize that. Jane, Jane actually put it on, on our elementary webpage today. So I will log on with a different computer and see if I can get on and.
Yeah, and and alternate, like a non-Carver account.
Right. Thank you.
And I, and I tried with three different ones and it only let me do it on the Carver one, so.
I'm right here. I'm gonna just to double check, so it should be corrected very quickly.
Okay.
Oh, thanks, Jane.
I find, you know, many things I try to open with my phone in using Google with Drive or something like that. Sometimes I just can't, it won't open until I get back and use my laptop.
No, it's it's a straight up access issue. You don't have access to this site. So it's, it's a, it's two clicks. I know Jane's probably on it and it'll be done within literally probably now. And then that's fine. I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, this is how great the Carver community is. I already have about seven texts that have said, I'll help with that, I'll help with that, I'll help with that.
I know, me too.
There's an admin all texting me that they're gonna help. So just thank you to everyone. And you're right, Jason, it'll be fixed in a flash.
Jen raised her hand and so did James.
Okay, Jen.
Thank you. I do think that this is going to be a great resource. I just have one concern that I wanna kind of raise. We've been using many different modes of communication. Sometimes we're all calling, most recently in regards to meetings. We've been emailing and then using the app. And now there's gonna be a website. And I know a lot of parents, even myself, but a lot of parents have expressed concerns that they're, they're not necessarily getting all the notifications. They don't know whether they're supposed to be checking their email, if they're supposed to be checking the app. And now there's gonna be a website. So I just wanna make sure that we are, I I think resources are great and and I totally thank you guys for the hard work that you've put into this. But I think that we need to be very, very clear in our communications to parents on where we expect them to go to get things, because we're now just adding another point of contact, another, you know, place to go. And I just want to make sure that we're being very clear and very communicative with parents so that everybody has access to the information they need.
Thank you, Jen. I really do appreciate that. I'm listening to you loud and clear and and we definitely have been working on that. So yes, we are going to continue to use our school app. And that's what we talk to all of the parents about when we get new registrations, new enrollments. We actually go through a quick tutorial to get them to download the app right away. And the reason that we need to use that app really is because for us, it's, it's very quick. I can quickly send a push in a matter of, I'm not kidding, 12 seconds. And that, that's huge. So, so yes, we absolutely do wanna streamline things. And we continue to remind our parents that it's, it's the, the app that we're gonna use. We're going to also post information on Google Sites. So Sites and and the app right now. And then, yes, we're also going to, we're working with our teachers so that they, they're using Google Classroom and Class Link. It's a, it's a parent communication messenger tool to communicate with with them as well. But for school-wide information, I definitely need all our parents to have downloaded that, that, the app.
Ruby, I have a quick question before I go to James. I'll ask you first, Jen, does that answer your question? Okay, Ruby, is there a tutorial on how to use the app on the web, on this new website?
Um, you know, when I looked through it today, I didn't see that on there, so we will get that in there for you.
I'm just saying if it might.
Can we talk about the Class Link, Ruby?
What's that?
It's Jane again. That site's live now. Were we talking about the Class Link?
No, we're talking about, so, so maybe, so Andy, are you talking about the app or are you talking about Class Link?
Talking about the app.
The app, the, I have the, I have the app, the Carver Coyote app.
Okay.
Yeah, it might be small coyotes.
So we, we have a, we, we do have a tutorial. We'll get it on the, on the sites tomorrow.
Okay, as I say, if you're gonna push this site, it might, if you're giving them all separate tutorials on how to use the app, it might be useful to have it on there too.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, thank you. James O'Brien.
A couple of things. Jen kind of hit a point that I wanted to make sure was clear too. We gotta be careful as we add all these things that, you know, when we started this meeting, there were 280 people here. We're down to 101. So not everybody's getting the message in this way. So just making sure it's a pretty clear unified message, as Jen was saying, going out so parents know really where to search for what they're looking for. But beyond that, I'll say it again, this is a awesome user-friendly page. I think you guys put some fantastic work into this. I I love it because I think it's easy to access. I might recommend, especially considering that we're starting remote, that, that there are tutorials on Class Link and Google Classroom and tutorials that can help parents work with their kids if the kids are gonna have this expectation of being home in a much different scenario than it was in the springtime. And I'm not sure what's there yet, Jane, so I don't know. I haven't had a chance to fully look through it. I think it's, it's organized great. I just think those kind of tutorials are gonna be really helpful for parents if their kids are gonna be working more remote to start the year.
Yeah, and I just want, I just wanna add again that I really appreciate the feedback on this. You know, that was one of our questions when, when Paula, Tanya and I talked about the Google Sites a week and a half ago. We said, okay, wait, we have a website, we have this, we have this, we have this. We named all the things we have. And we had to really weigh all of those, those factors. We also, you know, have Aspen now too, instead of IPass. So as a district, we've really been working to streamline some things and Aspen is gonna help us do that. And since we're also a Google school, we felt like Google Sites was something that we needed to do. And it was a very appropriate time to, to be in line with the middle high school. And yes, our goal is gonna be now to continue to streamline things so that we have a couple places to look as opposed to seven or eight.
All right. Does that answer your question, James?
Wasn't really a question. Yeah, thanks.
Oh, yeah, your concerns. Okay. Anyone else?
Stephanie raised her hand.
Stephanie, okay, Stephanie.
I just did. Hello. I just also wanted to say thank you. This is awesome. I went on it on my phone to check it out. It's very user-friendly. I just, I'm, I'm a fan of multiple forms of communication, so I appreciate it, but that's my personality. But I wanted to just ask, are there gonna be any resources available to families that do not have English as their first language? How do we handle those types of issues for people in our community? That was just something that that came into my mind, so I just wanted to ask.
We'll give, we'll give that one to Meredith.
That's a great, that's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. We have multiple resources in that department, but are always trying to continue to strengthen them. So there are some enhancements. Our website will translate to the user's native language as long as they select that. And the same thing with a variety of other apps. So you can go in and you can select your native language. The other thing that we do is we do employ interpreters when we are having meetings with families or we need to transfer that information. And to the credit of our EL teachers, Pat Tovin and Beth Goodwin, they have put an extensive amount of time into translating materials and emailing parents, calling parents, messaging with parents to make sure that the language barriers that do exist in comprehending such a vast amount of information can be remedied. And it is a continuous effort and a continuous job. And and they go above and beyond all hours of the day trying to make sure that we continue to provide that and perfect that.
Okay, thank you very much, Meredith. I just wanted to make sure that people were aware. I knew, I, I had the utmost confidence that the information was available, but I just wanted to bring that to public light. So thank you very much and thank you to everyone that that worked on putting this together. It's fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. So yeah, it's tremendous amount of work and it's gonna be a great asset for the, for the elementary school community. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
All right, so we're on to the middle high school website.
Yeah, I lose my place when I, my phone shuts off. Okay, middle high school handbook, addendum, and COVID website.
Yeah, so they're gonna look specifically at the website per se, which is gonna be linked in the handbook. So Mr. Schultz is here, I believe.
Yep, I'm here. So I guess I'd like to start by addressing some of the questions that came up in the, at the end of the last presentation with the middle high, with the elementary school website. I think our intention is, at least when we started this at the middle high school, was to capture everything we could possibly capture that's different and new. And I'm sure we missed some things about this new school year. And the website was the ability, I mean, I've gone in here and edited what I started hundreds of times already. So keeping the information current and new is gonna be what's vital for parents as things change. So our, our intention would be, we don't have an app at the middle high school, but we do use, we used to do a lot of emailing through Jupiter Ed, which we will now do through Aspen. And we'll link this, which I'm sure the elementary school will link this directly to our main page off of Carver.org. So if you go to Carver.org, I'm assuming we're gonna link these right on the main cover page. It'll bring us here. So this, like, we did ours just a little differently. We're across the top. We've got some subcategories. And and I hadn't seen the elementary schools yet until it was done today. So we probably are gonna add some, I don't know if we'll do a video of me by the front door, but we will, we will add some, some additional resources and some examples of, for us anyway, in terms of Aspen. Aspen's gonna be a challenge, I think. Not a challenge, but it's a new program that we're gonna be getting out to parents. We wanna make sure we roll it out well. So we probably will add some Aspen tutorials. But if you scroll down the site, I don't know who's scrolling, but.
I, I am, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So just a basic overview, we do have a link. We do have some information about Aspen, but we're gonna put some videos there. Just some information about our focus. And then as you get to the bottom, we do have a supply list. And then we did sort of, we have our handbooks and then we did capture some information in the bottom in terms of resources and links and stuff like that. We've added some of the posters. Julia Whalen, our new science teacher, has done a bunch of posters district-wide. She's got some great graphic design skills. So we put some of those up and then some other additional COVID stuff. So the, our thought process in this was to sort of, if we go up to the top, Scott, create some sub-pages within the website. And I don't know to how much detail.
You wanna pick one to look at?
Yeah, I mean, we, I think one of the ones that would be, one of the biggest changes for us would be drop off and pickup. You know, this is something that I've talked about last year for a little while. In years past, our buses would go into the bus loop here. And the cars dropping kids off would also go into the loop where the flagpole is. Was not a great system. And not a lot of districts have the buses and the kids being dropped off in the same area. So the last, this year I wanted to change the way we do that and COVID gave us an excuse to do that. So we are gonna be using the back of the building now as our bus loop and drop off. As you can see in the picture to the left. And thanks to transportation, they actually, we did a dry run of this last week. They got all the buses, 12 buses lined up to see how it would work. But in terms of the way we're gonna be doing it for COVID, the buses would come in to the back down Pond Street. They would make a circle behind the high school gym, all 12. they would make a circle behind the high school gym, all twelve will fit in that loop, and the first bus will wait sort of, uh, where the greenhouse is. The second picture shows that we will be, uh, bringing students, uh, in two buses at a time, so we would wave the two buses forward. We would unload.
Oh, sorry, Mike. Hey, Mike, sorry about that, there was some, uh, background noise.
Hello?
You're unmuted again, sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I had, there was some background noise, sorry about that.
Yeah, so the two buses will unload, uh, two at a time. Uh, high school kids go in one entrance, middle school kids go in the other. In terms of drop-off out front, the front is now designated for parent drop-off, um, and there's some information there. So each one of these sub-page, I'm trying to, here I am trying to click on the pages, but Scott doesn't. Each one of these sub-pages has information that, um, you know, if we go to, like, classrooms, for example, hallways, actually, hallways is fine, we can go to hallways, another example of, you know, we have to re-figure out how to move about the building. Uh, we have some maps, we've identified it's certain stairways is up and certain stairways is down, there's information about traffic flow, uh, there's information about expectations with students with masks and so forth, so, um, across the top, we just have, we just have a bunch of tabs, under additional resources, we go to classrooms.
Yep.
And again, I don't know how much detail the group wants to get into, and this is gonna be the bulk of our presentation next week with parents, but, under additional resources, there are other things, um, you know, Chromebook information, for example. Uh, information about Chromebooks, one of the things that was, um, confusing for parents last year was what to do if your Chromebook breaks, what's the process, so we've, we've streamlined it, we've added it here. Unfortunately, there, we, there are, there are times where we have multiple ways in which we communicate, and, um, we haven't launched this officially yet, this link is live, so if I was to send it to you now with an outside address, you could get on it, but I haven't sent it out through Aspen yet, which I will do tomorrow morning. But a lot of times when someone sends you an email, unless you save the email a certain place, the email gets buried in your email, and then you're wondering where that link is, so the link will be, uh, we'll make sure that people know the link is on the Carver website, uh, and this is, is a resource for us. And hopefully people can find it fairly easily. If you go to schedules, there's a few more tabs, just quickly, um, on the schedules tab, again, here's all of the schedules. Talks a little bit about each, each one, has a link to ingenuity with some information there, and some details about hybrid and, and the hybrid model. And there's some stuff that we need to add to this, um, as we're working out what the hybrid model at the middle high school looks like for students when they're at home. Um, and I'll go into more detail with parents, uh, about that on Monday, when we meet. Finally, I, I took the opportunity to add a few extra links here that maybe not necessarily related to COVID, but while they're on the site, we could, we can plug our new career and technical education program with, um, all of our, our programs, uh, we are launching the, a lot of these programs, this year, and kids are taking classes, and then we've done some brochures for each one. So that's exciting information for families. I did not get an opportunity, and I will do this probably as we get rolling, maybe in, um, October, November, to fully sort of launch this into a parent presentation, which I'm looking forward to doing, we had planned to do that in April of, of this year, and we just didn't get a chance to do it. So I wanted to get that information out, make sure it's current, uh, and then finally, just a link to our newsletter. So, um, again, we will go over this in more detail with parents on Monday. But, you know, if you've got any questions, and again, I would take feedback as well, so if you're thinking, geez, I didn't, I don't know, what's the procedure for students in the bathroom, how many kids are allowed in the bathroom, when can they go to the, it's, it's all there. And we try to categorize it, um, where people would naturally think, so for example, if you're talking about mask breaks, my thought process was I put it in under classrooms because that's probably the most common area where kids would be looking for mask breaks and stuff like that. You know, bathrooms and passing, we put some information about bathrooms and, and stuff like that, in the hall passing and stuff like that, so, just trying to think, where are the, where are all these new things, where do they fit? Naturally, and then, another big one, Scott, would be the health office. And again, I, this was a team effort, like, there are a lot of people, uh, in the school that have contributed to that, to this website. Obviously, people that have their specialties like athletics and athletic, athletics and guidance, uh, and scheduling, and the nurse's office, but, um, you know, everyone took a different approach, some did frequently ask questions, some just listed things. Um, but, feedback is great, if people see something that we missed, um, we've had our eyes on this now for two weeks, the staff has had their eyes on this for two weeks, so, as you see things, as you have thoughts, um, suggestions, we, we would love to make this as streamlined as we possibly can.
Yeah, and I would just like to thank, uh, both Ruby and Mike, and the administrative teams and the staff at both buildings for, and the teachers for working on developing these sites, I think it's just, uh, will be a good resource for a lot of information in regards to how, uh, different really our world is at this time. I think, uh, someone had raised their hand, James?
Thanks, again, nice job, Mike, and everybody who was involved in this, it's a clean-moving site, I had a question, underneath where the, it says the middle school and the high school handbook, Scott?
No, it's only down the bottom.
No, no, you gotta go back to the main page.
I was, I was, I gotta go to the main.
Those links may not be live yet, but.
That was, that was my question, Mike, I didn't know if you intended them to be live links or not, they weren't, I was just clicking on them, it wasn't doing anything.
They, they are, the intention is that.
Not the handbook, Scott. It's in progress.
Yeah. Coyote, coyote, I'm all over the place. There we are, now I'm back.
So just, just scroll down below the handbooks right there. Right there, that gray bar, see that gray bar? Oh, right there, yeah, it is.
Yeah, uh, so, so, our.
So your plan is to make those all links?
Yeah, well, they, they would link back to the top page.
To the, to the beginning, to where they were.
They, yeah, so for, yeah, that, that was my, that's my initial plan, is that if I'm scrolling down and I see something that I would click on hallway patterns, it would bring me to my hallway patterns.
Cuz it's the, it's the same as, as the taskbar that you have across the top technically, though, it's just formatted differently. Is you, I see you that you have a search, uh, bar at the top, so, if someone was looking, they didn't see mask breaks, could they just type in their mask breaks, and will it bring them to their classroom area?
I don't know, that's a good question.
Or are they gonna have to understand that, that's there? So it does, it says classroom, brings you to that, okay, awesome, nice.
I, I did not know that, James, thank you.
Yeah, right on.
That's good.
Perfect, thanks.
Just like I planned.
And, uh, I don't see any other questions, Andy. Hope Stephanie brought her head up.
Yeah, it's more just a comment. Again, I, I really wanna say, you know, thank you, um, to Mr. Schultz, to his staff, to his team, to everyone that has worked on this behind the scenes. I know it's an incredible amount of work, while you're trying to work through, you know, reopening the schools and all of the details that go into running the day-to-day, days there. Um, so I truly appreciate it, and I think this will be, um, a great resource, and I love the fact that it's permanent. Um, and I think it, it'll be easy, I think, for parents to find it from the website, but I just wanted to say, um, thank you, cuz I know that this is an incredible amount of work. On top of all the incredible amount of work you've had to do to, to get ready to go back to school, you know, during this pandemic, so I just wanted to make sure that I said, thank you, everyone, and please let your staff know that, um, we all greatly appreciate their efforts. And same to, same to Ruby, um, and Tanya, please pass that message along as well, so, thank you.
Will do, thank you.
I don't see any other hands up, uh, Andy. So I'll say, I'll say thank you to Mike, I don't know, did we lose Andy?
Andy, you're muted.
I'm muted.
You're muted.
Is there anything else on this, Scott, that we need to address on the handbook or anything?
Nope, you don't need to take any action on this item, just a review of the website.
All right, so then we go to, uh, oh, Scott, you were, you were gonna say something, Scott.
Nope, I'm good.
Oh, you were just, you were just filling in while I was muted?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay, we're gonna go to reports from the school committee. So, would anybody, uh, does anybody have anything they'd like to report before we end our regular meeting? Yeah, I don't see any here.
I, I, I'd like to say something, Andy. I just, I would like to, to wish all the teachers and, and the students the best start that they can possibly have through this remote situation. Uh, it's challenging for everybody, everybody faces different challenges. Um, this is a different scenario, I, I know Jason, to your point, teachers have worked really hard, but until we get into application, none of this becomes really real. And I think these next couple of weeks of this are gonna be a, a, a good starting point for us to get going, in a situation that we might all end up in any, anyway later on. So I just wanna wish everybody the best in their, and their, and their unique start for the year, and, uh, hope that things go as, as well as possible.
Thank you, James. Anyone else? Scott, I can't see hands, if some of you are raising hands.
I raised my hand.
Sorry about that, Stephanie and Jen, I apologize.
Jen?
So, um, I, yeah, I was gonna say something similar to James, um, I want to wish all of our teachers, um, best of luck next week as you start, um, teaching the new year, and to all of the students' parents, I wanna say thank you, um, for your collaboration and your assistance, I know that this school year is not starting the way any of us would want school to start, and now with this, um, switch to remote for the first, uh, eight days of school, that is gonna present an additional challenge, and, um, it's not a decision, uh, that I personally made lightly. But I, I did feel very strongly convicted that I needed to trust the judgment of our superintendent and other, other administration. You know, we, as a district, are really, really lucky to have the administrative team that we have, and, um, COVID nineteen is teaching us a lot, and perhaps one of the things it's teaching us is that maybe, uh, our emergency preparedness isn't where it needs to be, as far as backups and, and cross-training and things, and some holes may have been identified, but we are in a perfect storm, and we're in unprecedented times, and you know, yes, we've been working on this all summer, but like, we still, you, you're never prepared for every, any situation, and so, um, I want to ask the community and parents for patience. Have patience with teachers, have patience with administration, have patience with us as the school committee as we navigate these times, um, I want to continue to thank all of our administration and staff and teachers for the tremendous hard work that you've been putting in and that you'll continue to put in, um, I hope that next Wednesday is a great day for everybody as we start the new school year. I hope that this remote is very temporary, and eight days in that it will end, and we will, um, start to see some in-person learning. I feel strongly that that's very important. And, um, I just, yes, that's, that's where my thoughts are at right now. You know, just, just good luck next week, everybody, and just have patience with us, like, none, none of these decisions are easy, I think James said it earlier, that like, you know, where, no matter what we do, it's not a good decision, um, and we felt like that most of the summer. But, it's been very, very hard, and, um, and, and everybody's working really, really hard, and so, um, you know, just stay safe, everybody, um, be smart, and let's have a good start to the school year next week, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Um, Stephanie Clority?
Sorry, my mouse decided to, um, stop working. Um, it's lazy. Um, I also want to, um, wish everyone, um, a great start to school next week. We're definitely going into, um, an unprecedented year, um, for everyone involved, and it is going to take a tremendous amount of patience, um, on everyone's part, um, to help this, be, be a smooth, I don't know, as, as smooth as it possibly can be. Um, I'm sure there will be things that continue to pop up, um, as it did, um, as was discussed tonight with the, the active, um, positive COVID cases in Carver. Um, and as things continue to develop and change, this is a fluid situation on all levels, and we will, as a committee, address those as necessary, and I know I have the utmost faith that our, um, our superintendent and our administration and our teachers and, and everyone, um, will do a good job, um, communicating that and staying on top of things. Um, cuz, like Jen just mentioned, none of the decisions that we make, um, are taken lightly, none of them are easy, they're, they're all complicated. Um, but if we can continue to remain, um, patient and open-minded, and compassionate and understanding, uh, this will be a much better experience for everyone. I want nothing more than to see, um, you know, a science fair, I wanna see an art show, I wanna see a sports game, I, I wanna see these kids in, enjoying all of the things that make a school experience in Carver special. I, I so want to see everyone get back to those things. And I, I hope and I pray that, uh, at some point, we will, we will get back to a certain sense of normalcy. Um, and I just appreciate all of the hard work and effort that has gone into, um, trying to offer the students on, as familiar of an educational and a, a sports experience, um, as we possibly can. So, that being said, I wish everyone, um, a tremendous start to school. Um, and, thank you very much to everyone that attended, and thank you to everyone that contributed, and have a great night.
All right, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Jason, Jason, do you have anything? I can't see him.
I doubt Jason did not raise his hand.
Thanks.
I could say no, Jason?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, everybody, well, I would just like to quickly say, um, I, I'll repeat some of the, the things that my colleagues have said. None of these, uh, one of these, uh, issues is easy to decide. Um, none of us take it lightly, um, none of us wanted to start the season, um, I mean, the school year and anything other than what we had voted on, and, and, um, I think it was very, um, it was very hard to, uh, put all that together, but, especially with all the information and feedback we got from people on our original vote. And, but the bottom line is, like I said, is that, you know, things, oh, I've said before, things could change a hundred times before we even get to, uh, opening school. So, when Scott made the, the proposal to open for a week and a half, initially I, I felt, yeah, okay, I, I could support that, but I, I felt better in a week, so, that was my decision. But also, the, the fact that that there wasn't a widespread outbreak of this in Carver, that's a good thing. We had four cases, as Board of Health said, in one home. And we all, um, you know, wish them well, and say, have our, say my prayers for them, and hope everything's fine. And, um, and, and all the, all the, all the six cases. So it wasn't a case of, uh, for me, it wasn't a case of a threat to teaching in person. To me, it was when, um, our administrative staff is telling us that they can't open the buildings correctly the way they want to, uh, before the, the school was supposed to start on the, on the sixteenth. And, um, and especially with the HVAC, uh, units, we, uh, you know, we promised the, the staff that we would do everything that we could to, to, you know, to dot all the i's and cross the t's to keep themselves safe, so I think doing, doing that is, uh, appropriate as well. So that's why I was willing to go to a full remote for at least one week. But that being said, um, we're gonna deal with what we are dealing with now, and I wish everybody a great o- opening of their school year, and, um, and we'll get back to normal soon, hopefully. Uh, on a second note, I just wanna say one more thing. I hope everybody can take time to remember, um, the over three thousand people who died, um, in the anniversary of September eleventh, two thousand and one tomorrow. I know with COVID and everything, we have kinda unintentionally lost track of that, you know, that attack, and, um, I hope just you take a second to, or a minute to remember them. And, uh, that'll be it, I would entertain a motion to leave. Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I just raised my hand in anticipation of making a motion.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Okay, Stephanie, you've read my mind, then.
Um, I make a motion that we, um, adjourn our public meeting to. I make a motion that we, um, adjourn our public meeting to executive session, not to return to open meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, a roll call, vote. James O'Brien. Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
Stephanie Clority.
Stephanie Clority, aye.
Jen Pratt.
Aye.
Andy Cotterelli is also an aye. So we are now adjourned at 9:21. So thank you, everybody, for attending our meeting tonight. Thank you, Area 58, for, um, getting this, they're gonna get this on the webs, on the cable channel and on YouTube as soon as they can. And, um, have a great night, everybody. Thank you.